Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to our meeting of Tuesday, November the 13th. And our first order of business, I'll give you one half a second here, is our "Oh Canada", and I'm just wondering, is our clerk somewhere in the area here? He's, uh, is he out there?
And she's in the bathroom.
In the bathroom? Okay. So first off, we'll start by introducing Kylie Zaworski. Are you Kylie? Hi Kylie, I'm gonna introduce you, okay honey?
Hey.
So give me one second, is the little red button on, in front of you?
She's all set.
She's all set, okay, great. So Kylie is gonna sing "Oh Canada", this is the way we start off our city council meetings now. Kylie Zaworski is nine years old, she's in grade four at Holy Name Catholic School in Welland. Kylie's a member of the performance team at The Music Depot, and she sings soprano. She and the band that she plays with have been asked to perform at Walt Disney World next August. Along with singing, Kylie enjoys drama and has been a part of six musical plays in the last three years with Linus Hand Productions. In one of her biggest roles yet, Kylie will be playing Chip in this year's production of Beauty and the Beast. So whenever you're ready Kylie...
Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Caldo basse po de la paire, et ce po de la quoi. Ton is twa le tue ne po paire, de pluie on se xpo. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
So Kylie, were you nervous at all singing it today?
Um, kind of.
Kind of? Do you feel better that it's over with?
Yeah.
Well, you did a great job, and you made me feel great about being Canadian. So on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, I wanna say thank you very much. Good luck with Linus Hand, and good luck with Walt Disney World.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, well done, thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our first order of business will be the adoption of the minutes from two meetings. There were August the 14th, and there was September the 17th. So I'm looking for a motion to accept, moved by councillor Morocco, second by councillor Strange. Is there any, yes councillor Ayononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had called, I had spoke to Ms. Fabro today, just to amend the minutes, under the minutes of August 14th. It didn't have councillor Morocco, Crater, or myself voting against the application for the apartment across from Washington Mills, and so she's fixed it since then, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other amendments? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. Any disclosures of a pecuniary interest? Councillor Ayononi?
Thank you, check 419139 made out to myself, and checks 418399 and 418919 made out to a member of my family.
Thank you, councillor Peter Angelo, and then Strange?
Yeah, thanks your worship, I work for the Niagara Catholicistic School Board, I think there's five checks on there for that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Strange?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, check number 418323 and 418780 to myself.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, worship. Anything to do with the boarding house bylaw study, because I have some modells and it could affect my business.
Yep, absolutely. And I've got check numbers 418544, 419328, and 420232, made out to myself as well. So next up is always the most popular part of the meeting, it's the mayor's remarks. First off, we start off with obituaries, and we'd like to offer condolences to the following: To Don Johnson and his family. Peter Maves, father of regional councillor Bart Maves. Garnet Roy Cannon, retired firefighter. Carol Janey Alexander, mother of firefighter Richard Alexander. Margaret Young, mother of Lori Bittner of our Business Development Department. Bruce Douglas Green, retired platoon chief. Elise May McCauley, the mother of Don McCauley, our district chief at Station 6. Anna Lachance, mother-in-law of Roger Pigeon, our fire services. Roland Maves, father of Jim Maves from our transportation services. Stan DeCosmo, father of Joe DeCosmo of our transportation services. And then Angelone, former regional councillor representing Niagara Falls. Also a big thank you, during the months since my diagnosis of Hodgkin's lymphoma, council members have been stepping up. Their presence in the community has really meant a lot to myself and the people of Niagara Falls, and I'd like to thank all of you. Just quickly, councillor Strange, representing the city at the grand opening of Zippy Zooms, Pie in the Sky for Pastone Mental Health, United Way Elimination Dinner Draw, the CN Eco Connections Tree Planting, Volunteer Recognition Evening Award Presentations, greetings at Road to Remembrance Ceremony with St. Mary's School, and the 100th birthday of Teresa Doucette. Councillor Campbell, representing the city at the grand opening of Infinite Motion Dance Studio. Greetings at Play Play Play, Niagara Falls Piano Project Launch. Franco Ontario Day flag raising. The Royal Canadian Legion District B Fall Convention. The Arts and Culture Wall of Fame induction ceremony. The opening ceremony for the Winter Festival of Lights. Christchurch Remembrance Day Service. Chippewa Remembrance Day Service, Celebrate Niagara Mayor's Newcomer of the Year Award Presentation. Councillor Crater, representing the city for the greeting at the Matthew D'Nelli Memorial Fundraising Event. Councillor Kerrio at the Oktoberfest Tapping of the Keg Event. Councillor Peter Angelo, the grand opening of Papa John's Pizza, Canadian Tire Superstars Snacks and Sneaker Day, Youth Soccer Cup and Dinner, Pie in the Sky for Pastone Mental Health, grand opening of Zippy Zooms, greetings for the Toronto Maple Leafs and the minor hockey teams at Hornblower, the Terry Fox Run, the Niagara Falls Summer Trillium Recognition of Excellence Ceremony, Dobie's Florist 130th Anniversary, Barb Greenwood's Governor General Medal Award Celebration, Go 21 Walk for Down Syndrome Awareness, grand opening of John &amp; Alan Park Cricket Pitch, presentation at Welcome Home, Mike Strange, El Camino Run 2018, Welcome Home, Mike Strange. Volunteer Recognition Evening Greetings and Awards Presentation. Also to councillor Thompson, representing the city at the Terra Vita Development, the Winter Festival of Lights Cascades of Fire Press Conference, the Greetings of Cascades of Fire Opening Show, the City of Niagara Falls Remembrance Day Service. And councillor Morocco for representing the city at the Niagara Korean Association Symposium for Veterans and Families, greetings of Desiree's Ride, greetings at From Niagara to Israel with Love, dedication for the Line of Duty Death Memorial, International Society of Crime Prevention Practitioners Convention, the United Way Campaign Kickoff Flag Raising, the Niagara District Firefighters Association September Meeting, the grand opening of the Lundey Manor Wine Cellars, Warner Road Red Carpet Premier, and the LIT Entertainment Launch Party. I'd also like to thank our outgoing regional council members. It takes an awful lot of courage for anyone to put their name on the ballot. And I know there's a number of other people in this room as well that put their names on the ballot. And I know it's not easy, it's a big commitment to you, to your family, to your friends, and it doesn't always work out the way that you hope. But we'd like to recognize everybody that's put their name forward to stand for public office. We have two regional council members in Niagara Falls who will not be returning, and to them, we'd like to say thank you for keeping the issues of Niagara Falls well-represented at the region. We'd like to thank councillors Bart Maves and Selena Ballpatty, who's here tonight. So thank you very much. Next up, I'd like, if I could please, to call up councillors Morocco and councillor Crater, if you would come inside the horseshoe, please. We'll start ladies first. Councillor Joyce Morocco, from the mayor and members of council recognizing your years of public service to the citizens of Niagara Falls. We decided the best thing to do is to give you this beautiful picture of Niagara Falls with a plaque on it, Joyce, and it's got your years of service, 2003 to 2006, 2010 to 2014, and 2014 to 2018. And on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls, can we please show some recognition for the council members?
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you so much. Well, it's truly been an honor, and I'd like to thank all of the constituents that have allowed me and given me the honor to represent them over the years. And also my fellow colleagues around the table, sometimes it's not always been easy, we're not always on the same side, but that's not what we're elected, and that's not what we're here to do. So I think it's always, decisions are always based on the best interest of our community, and I hope that's what continues to happen here. I wanna thank the staff for all of their assistance over the years, it's been a pleasure working with them, and I know that you have some good challenges, and we've got some positive things that are in the future and that we've worked on, and some of the things that we've worked on over the years don't come forward till long after you're gone. I remember in 2006 when I didn't get re-elected, and then when I was elected in '10, some of those things were just coming back around the table again. So it's sometimes frustrating that it takes so long, but it's a great opportunity, it's a great honor. And I do have to say thanks and congratulations to those that were successful, Lori and Chris, and we'll be watching and make sure that you always remember that the decisions you're making is the best for the whole of the community. So I hope you will work very hard and listen, and listen to both sides of every story. Thank you.
And I know what you're saying about sometimes you get to take credit for things from before, I'm still taking credit for things Wayne Thompson didn't read, who's the mayor. No argument from him. So next up, I'd like to call up, way back, councillor Crater. I'd like to present to Kim as well, a plaque and as well a beautiful picture of Niagara Falls, and a pretty big plaque with lots of years of service. I'd like to start by giving that to you so I can read this to you, Kim. And it's presented to Kim Crater from myself and members of council and all the citizens of Niagara Falls recognizing your years of public service to the citizens. 1990 to 91, 91 to 94, 94 to 97, 97 to 2000, 2000 to 2003, and 2014 to 2018. We'd like to thank you, Kim, for your many years of dedicated service to the residents of Niagara Falls, and together we'd like to thank you.
Thanks very much. I jotted a few things down, so I hope you'll indulge me just for a couple minutes. First of all, of course, this evening is bittersweet for me. As you heard, I've been a politician for hundreds of years, according to the way you put it together, but it really has been an honor to, as Joyce said, to serve the public. You know, when I came back in 2014, there's a few things I noticed when I returned. The chamber had changed after being away as a provincial member of parliament. We had some new faces on staff, and some of the council processes had been changed or modified. But what hadn't changed is the fact that municipal government, and I truly believe this, is the level of government that is closest to the people. Despite all the development that we've had in this city, the increase in our population, the influx of new residents, Niagara Falls remains a community where the council, all of us are accessible to the public. You can either get us by phone, you can get us by text, you can get us by Instagram, you can get us by Facebook, and sometimes you can even get us in person. And we are totally accessible, and I say that to you because having been at the provincial level, and I was talking to councillor Kerrio, is the further up you go, the further away I found you are from the public. And being accessible and getting things done, it's amazing, the accomplishments that all of us in this room have made at the local level when we can have the opportunity to directly deal with our staff. So I too wanna thank the council members who have sat with me over the last four years. We may not always agree, but there's nothing wrong, in my opinion, with the difference of opinion. But hopefully, at the end of the day, we have the best, the best interests of the residents at our heart. And for those who are not coming back, I ask that duty or due diligence to councillors, keep an eye on the bottom line, be open and transparent. I wanna congratulate to new incoming councillors, Lori Lococo and Chris Dubrowski. New blood and new ideas are truly a good thing for council, and I have every confidence that both of you will do a great job. And I'm always available if you need any advice on what not to do, I'll be happy to share that with you. To my friend, Mayor Jim DiDaddi, or Jim, I wish you nothing, sincerely. Nothing but best of health and a full recovery going forward. This city, in my opinion, deserves you at 100% of your capability. Even at 50%, you're more than adequate. And as I said to you when we were at the debate, we were sitting side by side, I said to you, Jim, I've been through it, and there's light at the end of the tunnel. It's amazing what the healthcare system can do, and you've already indicated some really positive things that are happening to you. Enjoy your health, it's the most important thing in the world, and you're gonna have it back, and you're gonna be back in the ship, running it as you always have done, so I just wish you the best of health. Finally, I did have aspirations on how I wanted to see how things change, but the voters have spoken. And as they say, the voters are always right. I wouldn't trade the experience of this election for anything. Going door to door, I met many great people, and although I was a little disappointed with the outcome, I can tell you one thing that happened: The next day the sun shined, the next day I got out of bed, and Niagara Falls is still a great city to live in, so thank you very much.
And on another note, we're not going too far, we're always around, there's always another election.
Yes, councillor...
Sorry Jim, actually I couldn't find this, but just wanted to go back to pecuniary. I have two checks, check 418322, 4187 and 22, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk's got that. And the last two parts, our next council meeting will be the inaugural of the new council-elect, along with our two newest members who are in the gallery right now, Monday, December the 10th. That'll be taking place at the Gale Centre, and followed by the following day will be our regular first council meeting, Tuesday, December the 11th. So that concludes the mayor's remarks. Okay, we are now gonna move to deputations and presentations. We've got some council recognition, and what I'm gonna do right now, if I could, please call up councillor Strange, who's gonna hand out these awards for me, and I'm gonna read them. So first off, we're gonna call up Shelley Gautier. Shelley's here? Hi Shelley, if you can come on up. Shelley's no stranger to these chambers. Thirty seconds, okay? So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna first read a little bit about Shelley, again, no stranger to Niagara Falls City Council, she's been here many times, receiving awards on behalf of the city for excellence in her sport. And then when I've done that, we've got a video present, a little brief video presentation, and then councillor Strange is gonna present you with a little bit of a gift from the city of Niagara Falls, okay? So, on behalf of the members, fellow members of council, it gives me great pleasure to honor Shelley Gautier on her paracycling world championship in 2018. Again, Shelley no stranger to awards and accolades, and certainly no stranger to these council chambers that we've recognized here many times for her achievements. Some of her highlights of her career, in 2012, in London, the Paralympian. 2015, the Toronto Pan Am Games silver medalist. 2016, Rio, Paralympics bronze medalist. Shelley's been a Canadian world champion paracyclist from 2011 through 2018. This evening, Shelley is here to be recognized for the 14th world championship title of her career. That's right, 14th. She, yeah, you can do it, sure. She won, excuse me, the 27.2 kilometer women's T1 competition at the Union Cycling International Paracycling Road World Championships in Manjano, Italy, in August of 2018. Shelley has won more world championships than any other Canadian cyclist, either as a para or able-bodied athlete in all cycling events. Isn't that incredible? So folks, if I can draw your attention to the screen, please.
This evening, we will pay tribute to the men and women who have stood and suhowed the 2018 road cycling and road paracycling seasons.
It feels wonderful to be honored and to know that all the things I do, the special workouts and the gym work and just getting out and talking to people, to educate them about what I do is really fantastic. about what I do is really fantastic.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Shelley, we've got a little bit of something for you, I think this is like a bank full of money, or?
Yes, yes.
Help you on your endeavors for your next tournament, but on behalf of the members of city council, we wish to extend congratulations and best wishes to Shelley Gauthier, reigning world champion of the Union Cycling International Paracycling Road World Championships 2010, 2018. Congratulations, Niagara Falls native Shelley Gauthier, and Canada's most decorated para and able-bodied cyclist. Thank you so much. And maybe you can talk about your last year in competition and what's up next?
Well, I just would really like to thank everybody in Niagara Falls for helping support me and to get the job done. And I think what's really neat is that, I think three years ago, I started a Shelley Gauthier Parasport Foundation because I wanted to give back to everyone that was helping me, and I wanted to get disabled people who were sitting in their kitchen, didn't know what to do with themselves, I wanted to get them out of their homes, onto a track or a ten, a bike or a hand cycle, and get them involved in their community, and just to be a person, to be able to go out and have people say, "Hi, how you doing?", and not worry about your disability, and just treat you like a normal person. And the Shelley Gauthier Parasport Foundation, I don't know if you've heard about it, but it's out there, and it's doing some great work in Niagara and in Whitby, and there's some other places where we're getting people out, getting them involved in their community. And we have an announcement, Karen Naito is here, and she's from Brock University, and the Niagara Penguins and all that sort of thing, but I'd like to call her up here to make an announcement for you guys to hear.
Come through here.
Yeah.
Are you welcome?
So, I run the Brock Niagara Penguins, we're the parasport program here in the Niagara region, and we're really excited about announcing a partnership with the Shelley Gauthier Parasport Foundation. So the Shelley Gauthier Parasport Foundation has lent us a trailer and eight hand cycles. And if you don't know what hand cycling is, it's essentially like biking, but powered with your arms.
People in wheelchairs.
Right, and so the Brock Niagara Penguins right now, we have about 43 athletes from all over Niagara, of which six are Niagara Falls citizens, and we run wheelchair basketball, bocce, swimming, sitting volleyball, and then summer camp at Heartland Forest, also in Niagara Falls. So starting in January, our big announcement is because of the unbelievable work that Shelley Gauthier Foundation and Shelley herself have been doing, we actually are going to be starting Thursday night indoor hand cycling classes. So we really invite any of you or any citizens of Niagara Falls who are interested in finding out more about hand cycling to give us a call at Brock Niagara Penguins, so that we can use some of the amazing equipment that Shelley's foundation has given us.
What's really good is handicap people can get involved, and also people that used to race cycles that aren't racing anymore, or recreational people, they can get involved, and they can help, and they can assist, and they can make a friend with a disabled person, and they're not disabled anymore.
Absolutely, and thanks to the council for honoring Shelley, you really do have a gem of a citizen of Shelley, because she really is helping to empower people with disabilities to be active and out in the community, so thank you.
Was that in China?
Yeah.
So they flew her all the way to China to give her this award, which is just truly amazing, and so is the Olympics in a year and a half, is that next?
Yeah, well, my next goal is to get a different colored medal.
Okay, any kind of medal from the Olympics is awesome, so I want to thank you, and you're a huge inspiration for me. Appreciate, well, I'll give your bags of money to... Thank you. Okay, next up, we'd like to recognize George and Liz Nybert, the Canada Games 65-plus mixed doubles tennis champions. So if I could please call George and Liz forward into the horseshoe to be recognized, please. Come get your bag of money. Just in case. I'm pleased to recognize husband and wife team George and Liz Nybert this evening and honor them for their achievements in the over 65 mixed doubles tennis at the Canada Games. Held in St. John, New Brunswick this year, the games celebrate adults excelling in physical activity in three older adult age categories. George and Liz had an impressive road to the Canada Games. They won the regional championships in Welland three years in a row, which qualified them to play at the provincial championships. They then beat the competition in the 65-plus mixed doubles provincial championships in 2017 in Hamilton. This earned them a spot at the Canada Games in the over 65 category where they won gold. Tonight, on behalf of members of council, I'd like to recognize their achievements and success, and congratulate both George and Liz, and I can say, I did play doubles with George as my partner against councillor Peter Angelo and George and Liz's daughter Kathy, and we did play, it was a very competitive day, I don't remember how it ended up, but we had a good time. All I know is I had a crutch that day when I showed up, but that's okay. The Nyberts have been invited now to compete the 2020 Canada 55-plus Games to be held in Kamloops, British Columbia. We wish them all the very best, congratulations. On behalf of the members of city council, we wish to extend congratulations and best wishes to you, George and Liz, gold medalists in the 2018 Canada 55-plus Games, meddling in the Canada Games 65-plus mixed doubles. So, congratulations, and we have the certificate for this limited edition Niagara Falls.
We only made $10,000.
Made $10,000? $9,000, $9,000. Do you have any interesting stories from the games, or some close matches, or how do you guys play together as a team when your husband?
I don't think I can ever do that. We were losing to Calgary, Alberta, and I said, "George, I can't do this." The guy was like six feet tall, mixed doubles are not going to pick on my husband, they're going to pick on me. He says, "One point at a time." We were losing 5-3, 5-4, 5-5, 6-5, 7-5, and the next set, 6-1. We just got on a roll, I think, it's nerves, ain't nerves, you're playing Canada Games, it wasn't easy.
So you took advice from your husband?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you basically, in tennis or any other sport, you win as a team and you lose as a team, as long as you're a...
We're competitive.
Yeah, you're competitive and you want to do a sport badly if you can do it.
Congratulations, that's amazing, congratulations. Hey Mike, after this one, then we'll call Ludzie, okay? And our last recognition we'd like to do today is Tatum and Carlin McLean, Dance World Cup European Champions, so if I could please call up Tatum and Carlin. So Tatum and Carlin are sisters, and from a field of more than 1,500 dancers who auditioned in three Canadian cities, sisters Tatum and Carlin McLean were offered the opportunity to join Team Canada, a group of 100 dancers who would compete at the Dance World Cup Europe 2018. In June, Tatum and Carlin traveled to, how do you say it, Sitges? Sitges, Spain, to compete among 6,000 dancers from 47 different countries in disciplines including acro, ballet, hip-hop, jazz, modern, contemporary, and tap. The girls achieved top honors in various categories. Carlin won three bronze medals for her performances in ballet, acro trio, and acro group. Which one's Carlin? Carlin, raise your hand, so we know, okay, Carlin did.
Was it Carlin in sleep?
What's that? I don't have my glasses on, I can't see it from here. And then Tatum, to her left, won silver for her acro group performance, gold in acro trio, and another gold medal with her tap group. Tatum's tap group also won best group in the 14-plus competition. This evening, we'd like to recognize the amazing accomplishments of Carlin and Tatum on the world stage competing for Canada. Congratulations, ladies. Certificates here. On behalf of the members of city council, we wish to extend congratulations and best wishes, Carol McLean, bronze medalist in the 2018 Dance World Cup European Championships, meddling in ballet, acro trio, and acro group. Congratulations. On behalf of the members of city council, we wish to extend congratulations and best wishes, Tatum McLean, gold and silver medalists in 2018 Dance World Cup Europe Championships, meddling in acro trio, tap group, and acro group. Congratulations. Since I presume you're still in school, you get some gym bags, something.
Backpacks?
Backpacks, gym bags. Anything you'd like to talk about? It must have been an honor representing Canada going over all the way to Spain, and where you nervous, and any interesting stories on competition while you're over there?
It was a great experience, and I was so grateful that I got to do it with my sister. And it was just interesting to see how like all the different countries interpreted dance too, because we're used to like Canadian dance, so then seeing how different countries like portrayed the different styles was cool too. We met like a lot of different friends from different countries, and we like we got different pins from people from different countries, they were just really cool, like that was a good experience.
Well, that's awesome, and we thank you for representing Canada on the world stage, and you guys are so amazing.
Thank you.
Love to take a picture. What's that? Oh, you go to your seat and call Ludzie. Okay, we've got one other deputation, councillor Strange, did you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I just noticed, we were trying to get Ludzie on the bill today to talk about his foundation and the gala that he's happening on November 30th, so I'd just like to make a motion that we let Steve speak on behalf of it, if that's okay?
Okay, moved by councillor Strange, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo, all those in favor, okay, that's approved, and Steve, you want to step up to one of the mics?
Hello, Lee. Mayor, how are you?
Not too bad, how are you doing?
For the councillors, how are you? This will be the seventh year for a roast. As most of you know, I've got Parkinson's, he was diagnosed 18 years ago, and I kept quiet about it for close to 10. I was doing a TV show in Toronto, and a lot of people were saying, "I liked Ludzie on TV, but it looks like he's drunk by the end of the show." Well, I do have a drink once in a while, but not on the show, it's a part of Parkinson's that you swear your words. So I decided that instead of squawking and moaning and groaning, I was going to do something about it, and we opened up the Steve Ludzik Parkinson's Clinic at the Hotel du Chèvre. And I'm happy to say it's rated number one in Canada. You can't find it, we raise all the money, it's, patients pay nothing. They come and we pay the therapists, the money we raise on the Ludzik celebrity roast. We've raised over a million dollars as we speak up today, going into our seventh year. And what's really special about this year is that Derek Sanderson is the guy we're roasting. Niagara Falls' favorite son, I guess. It should be, there's no lack of material we could use to roast him, but he's pretty exciting, we have, you know, I think all of you have been at the roast before and enjoyed it, and we have close to 1,000 people there, so I'd really like to see if you guys could buy a table.
Okay, thank you, yeah, go ahead, councillor Strange.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, but I just wanted to talk about what you've done the last seven years, been amazing, raising over a million dollars for your foundation, and you know, what he's done to Niagara Falls, like he could probably hold this dinner if you brought it to Toronto or anywhere else, but it's a special place that you hold it here in Niagara Falls, and I know you have Niagara Falls special place in your heart because you've been here playing junior hockey, and you get all these celebrities here, which we could probably never get here unless it was because of you to bring them all here, and if you've never been to the roast before, it's just an amazing event, they really make fun of a lot of people.
It's fairly clean.
It's a good cause, I couldn't think of a better person than Derek Sanderson, you look at him, and if you ever see the picture of Bobby Orr scoring that winning goal when he actually is up in the air, well, nobody knows who passed him that puck, well, it's Derek Sanderson passing that puck, so I've gotten him in that position to do that, so it's going to be a great night, and we love that you bring this event to Niagara Falls every year, and you know, you're bringing tons of people, and they're staying in our hotels, and you're at the Scotiabank Center, I know we got to bring in extra workers just for the event, so it's pretty amazing that you keep it here, so we thank you for that, and I'd like to make the motion that we purchase a table for the event.
I got that, moved by councillor Strange, and seconded by councillor Thompson. Do we have any discussion to the motion? We'll call the vote, all those in favor, okay, and that's approved, so we're going to see you there.
Thanks, yeah, look forward to seeing you on the 30th.
30th, thanks Ludzie. All right. Okay, next up, we're at, anyone following the agenda, 6.2, the boarding house study, and I'd ask our director, our planning, Mr. Hrlavich, if you'd introduce our guests here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Yes, I'd like to start off by introducing for you tonight our manager of policy, John Barnesley, he's been with the city probably close to 30 years, and so he's been heading up this study. We have with us tonight Dana Anderson from the consulting firm M H B C. They were hired to investigate the situation that we have with the number of hotels and motels that are being used to provide housing for people. This is the fourth initiative of this council in trying to address housing affordability in the city. Started off at the beginning of the year when council passed zoning regulations to allow second units in houses, this allows people buying into the housing market to have a second unit to offset their mortgage, or perhaps to have the elderly who want to stay in their house have a second unit. Council followed that up with the bed and breakfast bylaw, which would allow everybody in a residential zone to have three rooms in their house to be used as bed and breakfast, again to offset the cost of housing, and everybody knows what's been happening with the cost of housing in Niagara Falls in the last couple of years. Unfortunately, that bylaw is under appeal, but we are optimistic that we will be successful in getting that through. The third item that this council did was under Wayne Campbell, is the Out of the Cold Program, the shelter for men and women who are homeless, so that's at the very other end of the spectrum, and then what we have are the people who are housed in our hotels and motels, many of them living on provincial assistance, many of them receiving support services from the region, from the community social services. So this is an exciting opportunity for council to hear about an opportunity to really create housing, because housing is really the one item that's going to break that cycle of poverty and get people back on the path of fully contributing economically to their own well-being as well as the city, so I'm really proud to have Dana Anderson and Kelly Martel from the consulting firm make their presentation tonight.
Thanks very much, Alex, welcome.
Thank you very much, your worship, members of council. For the record, my name is Dana Anderson.
For the record, my name is Dana Anderson, I'm a partner, as Alex indicated, with MHBC Planning, and I have with me this evening my fellow planning colleague, Kelly Martel, with our firm. I wanted to start out by saying that it's quite impressive when I come to municipal council meetings to hear the accolades of the members of the community that have achieved so much, whether it's in sport or activities in the community. I would tell you there's no gold medals for planning, I wish there were. I would be in that 55-plus group, but I will tell you that it's been a pleasure working with staff and also with members of the community on this project. This has been a project where we, at the outset, met with staff and set out to ensure there was a group of individuals that represented the various aspects of this issue as it relates to planning and housing, and also for business and economic development related to specifically Lundys Lane and the BIA. And so we had an excellent group of representatives that I'll speak to, but I just wanted to make that reference, that that was a very important component of this, that it was, although we were facilitating the process, it really was a city-led process with those members. So you have before you, I believe, this evening, a number of reports, quite substantial, that are the background reports, and I'm not going to go through those. We provided staff for your information and executive summary to try and take what has been the work over the last year and provide a summary to you of the background work that we did, as well as the key findings and the recommendations that are before you this evening. So I'm here, let's see, this evening to provide a very brief outline for you to talk a little bit about the purpose of the study and the work program to achieve the recommendations before you this evening, to talk a little bit about the context for the study and see some key findings. One of the most important components of this study was our stakeholder consultation, I'd like to speak to that, as well as some of the analysis and the options that we put forward in the recommended option, and then speak to some of the next steps. So as was indicated and as is set out in the background information, council passed what's referred to as an interim control bylaw, and as you know, that's where council recognizes a concern with particular policies or zoning regulations that relate to a particular area or matter within the city, where in essence, council wants to take a pause and have a study undertaken to ensure that on a go-forward basis, the city has appropriate policies and regulations to guide a particular issue or development challenge within the municipality. And so in April of 2017, council passed the interim control bylaw, and our firm were retained, as well with the firm of SHS Consulting. And SHS were a complement to our work in that they specialize in housing, housing studies, housing policy and affordability. They were actually the consultants who undertook the region's housing strategy, so very well-informed and brought a lot of expertise in relation to this issue. And so the purpose of the study, as was noted, that there were challenges with the number of hotels and motels operating throughout the city, but also concentrated in the Lundys Lane area, that were operating beyond the initial tourist capacity, providing for a lot of extended, long-term stay, and in essence, providing housing through agencies for those in the community that are in need of a form of housing. And so as part of our background work and as was indicated, we wanted to understand first and foremost what that physical context looks like. And so in a background report that we prepared, we actually did site visits, site walks, and we inventoried properties throughout the municipality that fell into this category of those older hotels and motels that were being used for these purposes, and that also for some of them were seeking conversion for a more permanent solution for housing. And so you see here a map that identifies in blue the variation of these potential areas throughout the city. There also were others that were included just outside of this area, and we also noted that that's also a challenge, in that these are concentrated, but there are others in different physical contexts that we also looked at. So in terms of the work program that we applied to the study, as I indicated, we had our project initiation earlier this year, we undertook a significant amount of background research, which I'm just going to highlight. We undertook stakeholder consultation, I'll speak to that, and we did the physical contextual analysis as well, as well as a housing policy analysis. Throughout this study, as we undertook that background research, we brought back to this technical advisory committee that information and had discussions before we moved to the next steps. So it was a very iterative process, and I just wanted to note, and I think it's important, the range of individuals who served on that technical advisory committee, they included staff representatives from city planning, from the building department, from your finance department, they included representatives, who I believe David is here this evening as one, from the BIA for Lundys Lane, they included staff from bylaw enforcement, members of the Niagara Regional Police Department, as well as your city fire, and also representatives from the region of Niagara, community services and planning staff as well. And most importantly, Counselor Wayne Campbell was a member of our technical advisory committee. So this group, I think, was instrumental in working through the challenges and the issues that were raised, and also working with us to come forward with recommendations to address the challenge of how to deal with the conversion of these particular housing units. And so one of the key elements in this, and as Alex indicated, this is really part of the housing affordability issue in terms of a housing continuum. So we, I wanted to highlight this to show the importance of the housing continuum in terms of the various forms of housing that are throughout the municipality, and the challenges in trying to find how to deal with this particular issue with the motels and hotels in accommodating that broad range of housing continuum and need. So we see a range from, all the way from market homeownership, going to sort of the other end of the spectrum, where we're providing emergency shelters and housing, as well as transitional housing in the non-market section of the continuum. And one of the clear indications from our background research and the work, the interviews, the information we collected from those agencies, is that the motels and hotels in that inventory are substantially providing for that lower end of the spectrum in terms of both emergency shelter housing, transitional housing, and in some cases, some supportive rental housing. Very quickly to highlight some of our background research, we noted that there is limited permanent affordable housing being provided, that that emergency housing or assisted housing is being provided by the region and other agencies within some of these units. These units, in essence, are being used to fill that gap and that housing need. There is also, on the legislative side, no clear definition of rooming, boarding, or lodging house that's currently in place throughout the documents. Through our research, we saw that there were different inconsistent definitions, whether it's provincial policy, regional policy, local policy, or even in the best practice reviews that we did. We know that in both the region and the city's official plans, there is direction and objectives to address housing and the provision of affordable housing. And we also know that the city's licensing bylaw is a very important element in this study to provide support to whatever regulations we brought forward. However, it's lacking in its ability to regulate through licensing the second-level lodging houses and the motel hotel conversions it permitted. We also know, and this is important, that the Lundys Lane area is designated and is intended to be a tourist area, and we know that the significant number of motels and hotels in this area are providing for that long-term accommodation. And so that is a challenge to the Lundys Lane BIA, who want to ensure that that economic development objectives in their businesses, those objectives are maintained as we look at options and solutions for this housing issue. As I noted, as part of our background research, we undertook a very thorough legislative review, and I won't go through, but all the various layers of provincial policy and legislation. And the importance of that was to ensure that we not only addressed policies in relation to housing and the provision of housing that's set out in those documents, but also that any options and recommendations that we're putting forward are fitting within the framework of that policy legislation. We also undertook a case study review to look at other areas where this issue of the concentration of motels and hotels and the conversion for housing is happening, and we provided examples that were also within Ontario and some that were outside, recognizing that those outside of Ontario and also outside of Canada have a very different legislative context. But it was interesting to look at at least some of the creative solutions that some of these municipalities have offered that we perhaps could draw from. Go back here, whoops. What did I do? So again, those case studies, many of them identified, and I'll highlight here, is the importance of the licensing bylaw going forward with any type of option or solution to the conversion, and that's something that we provided for in our recommendations. The other note from the case study reviews is that many municipalities in Ontario have used something called an apartment motel use, and this is the conversion of the motels to predominantly residential dwellings, but also allowing the flexibility for a motel function as well. So that's somewhat of a hybrid, and you'll see that in one of our options as well. One of the other components we saw in the case study review was the importance of ensuring that whatever the solution is, that it minimizes the displacement of residents. Many of the solutions that we looked at would perhaps be appropriate, but would have a timeframe, they would have costs associated with them, that may also end up in the displacement of residents who are in those short-term stays or longer-term accommodations whereby, in order for the units to be retrofitted or to be transitioned, there would need to be some type of accommodation for those individuals. So keeping that in mind, as one of the elements that we saw from the case study, it was important to address that in our options. A number of the case studies obviously had funding, and of course, funding in terms of any solution for affordable housing is something that we saw that needs to be further looked at in terms of the region's funding potential, as well as the city's, and also looking at other levels of government to provide assistance when it comes to the provision of the supportive and transitional housing. And finally, any opportunities, as we saw in the Vancouver example, of private investment and partnership in some of these conversions, and that may be something to look further into for the municipality. As I mentioned with the stakeholder consultation, part of our work not only was looking at the physical context, historical development of this area and the changes, but it also involved an understanding from the perspective of those who are either working in this area, providing for the supportive housing in these units, and also those providing services to individuals residing in those units, as well as those who are engaged in their day-to-day activities, including not only the BIA members, but those who actually own and operate the motels and hotels in this area. So our intent with the consultation was to be broad and capture those various voices and input in terms of our study work to understand from their perspective what the challenges were and what the issues are going forward. That included informal, open-ended interviews with various individuals, sorry, individuals, and also to get a better understanding from the community perspective. We also found that we were challenged with a lot of concerns and conflicts as to how to solve this issue, knowing that it's part of a much broader problem. And so we brought in SHS Consulting, sort of halfway through the study, to really focus on what was important and needed to be in terms of a consensus, a solution to achieve the various objectives. And this was very helpful in that we were able to, whoops, we were able to obtain through that workshop session, an indication of what the solution had to have, regardless of the particular issues or challenges that that perspective brought forward. We knew that there was a lot of concern about the impact to local businesses, and there needed to be a retention of the primary focus, for instance, in the Lundys Lane area for the economic development activities related to those businesses, the ability for them to continue operating those businesses, to be able to expand and enhance those businesses in accordance with the Community Improvement Plan and the Streetscape Plan, but also recognizing that the status quo was not a solution, and that any solution also had to be implemented in a way that was, I would say, more than anything pragmatic, because we heard from bylaw enforcement and building that in order for them to implement a solution, it had to be something that they had reasonable resources to implement. For us to put in place a licensing bylaw, for instance, for some of these conversions that would require them to literally be hiring full-time people just for that particular licensing bylaw, was obviously not going to be feasible or appropriate. We had to ensure that through that licensing bylaw as well, that there was compliance with some of the concerns that came from Niagara, both Niagara Regional Police and from local fire, in terms of some of the issues that have, that they spoke about in terms of past experiences and issues with the units. So with all of that, we, before we sat out to look at the options, we did further evaluation of all of that information and our analysis. We wanted to make sure that we captured the physical context, the local community perspectives from all sides, so that we could look at a way to provide options to council to consider to address this issue. So you will see, I think, in the executive summary, I'm gonna go through them quickly, that we've put forward for council three options with what we would recommend as a preferred option, and these relate to a way in which, within the city's current planning context, because that's the scope of the work we're doing, that we could move forward and find a way to continue to accommodate those individuals currently being accommodated in the hotel and motels for a more permanent solution for the housing issue. And so the three options really are, an option which looks at something called a single-room occupancy, and this is a term that had been identified through the case studies from other municipalities. If you think of a boarding house, you really think of a home, and you think of rooms within the home that then internally share a kitchen area, they share bathroom areas, they share common areas. When you're converting motels or hotels, you don't have the opportunity to have those common shared areas internal to the particular unit. So you find in often cases, these are separated rooms, there's an outside area, and there may be a common area or an administrative office, that's not really a shared area for these units. So we looked at this single-room occupancy as a way in which to define a type of, in essence, boarding house for these units, that provides single-room provisions for individuals that would be, that would be accommodated with some improvements to those particular rooms to meet particular fire safety standards, and it would also allow that use to be recognized in the current zoning regulations as a permitted use in accordance with licensing standards and bylaws. And so, I'm gonna just flip down through these. When you think of a motel, what we're suggesting is this single-room occupancy would, in essence, convert the existing hotel room into a single-room occupancy. So each unit, in fact, would be independent, as it would be in a boarding house, but there would be a number of requirements for this use that would be required to be accommodated in relation to zoning regulations, which would include, for instance, in the zoning, which can only regulate the land use, buildings, and structures. So it would look to have regulations for these SRO units, things like minimum amenity space, so there would be a requirement for a minimum amount of amenity space, both in a common area or an outdoor area, minimum landscaped areas for the occupants of the units. The actual provisions for the units would be through the licensing bylaw, and those would include requirements and inspections, registration through the licensing bylaw, it would include a number of elements through which the city would have controls to license and regulate the number of units, as well as potentially the locations. Also added to this, we think is important, and that is something to consider, called the Demolition Conversion Control Bala, this would be very similar to the rental replacement housing-type provisions, whereby if someone were to come and seek to demolish a particular hotel that was accommodating single-room occupancy, there would be a requirement, whether it be for relocation in another facility, it could be through a contribution towards a fund that would provide these units in another location, but it would ensure that if the residents were in fact needing to be relocated, that there would be some control in place as to the way in which these units could be demolished. The alternative to this, which is really part of this The alternative to this, which is really part of this option, but we called it a bit of a hybrid, and that is where we would seek to allow the single-room occupancy as being defined in the zoning bylaw, but it would require a certain percentage to be maintained as a motel use. So we see that this option would actually work very well where a hotel is actually a two-story, because this would allow for perhaps the main level to continue to be to use as a motel with the second floor perhaps being used for the single-room occupancy. If there is a division between floors, that's at least an easy way for bylaw enforcement to ensure that it sets out where those various units would be. The difficulty in having the single-room occupancy mixed throughout the hotel would really be through enforcement and how you would manage where and how these units are located throughout the motel or hotel. And again, very similar in terms of implementation, there would be the need to update the bylaw to identify the single-room occupancy in the single-room occupancy building, and there would be updates to both the official plan and zoning to reflect those new uses, and again, added a new licensing bylaw to control the various regulations related to this particular use. Option B is somewhat different, and this is actually somewhat similar to a recent application for conversion, and this is where you would have a combination of the motel continuing, but actually with residential uses. So rather than the single-room occupancy units, which are more on the spectrum with the boarding house units, these would actually be dwelling units. So this mix would require conversion of the units to dwelling units to meet the requirements under the Building Code and various other enforcement requirements. It would allow for a mixture of the units as well, and again, it would require some updates to the official plan and to the zoning bylaw to recognize this new use.
No, she answered my question. So you'd be able to have a single-room occupancy and it be a hotel apartment?
In this case, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's B. Thank you.
And finally, option C was really in terms of implementation, more than an option. It's really looking at how we could allow the single-room occupancies on an interim basis, and really that was to put a time limit to some extent on the conversion, and we would do that rather than amending the bylaw to allow the single-room occupancies as of right. This option would allow that to be on a temporary basis. So the municipality has a control under the Planning Act referred to as a temporary use bylaw. It is rarely used, but where it is used, it's put in place the allowance for this transitional housing to continue for a period of up to three years. It can be extended, but this would allow a temporary provision for the transitional housing as single-room occupancies in those who then go forward to make it a more permanent solution on one of the other initial options that we presented. So our recommended option, based on our analysis, really comes down to option A, and we believe this is the most appropriate option for a number of reasons. It provides clarity for enforcement, and we think this is important for those that we met with on the TAC that indicated it was important to them to have a clear regulation in the zoning bylaw for this particular use, to understand that when they're going and enforcing this through a licensing bylaw, that it is the entire use that is being converted for the single-room occupancy. It again allows certainty for both the operators and the residents and the guests to allow those licensing provisions to be in place to ensure safety for the area. It also provides certainty and gives the city the tools that it needs to minimize impacts in the area. It allows for the maintenance of the commercial designation, so it would be maintained as a commercial use in the bylaw, and in terms of impacts to taxation, that's something I know we've, the city has looked at, into, and we would continue to look at maintaining the tax base for commercial uses under this option. And so your worship members of council, we put that forward, we do recognize, and we've, we had at our last TAC meeting, some questions that were raised in relation to the options, and we had correspondence with the BIA, and I understand they're here this evening, and they have some comments with respect to their preferred option being the hybrid option, and we certainly welcome those comments. Our next steps in terms of our role in the study is to, based on the direction of council, is to move forward with the recommended option and start to develop the implementing zoning amendments and start working with staff to identify those elements of a licensing bylaw that would need to come forward, bringing that forward to the community through consultation, probably sometime early in the new year, and then further statutory public meetings based on a new zoning bylaw amendment sometime in early February with refinements and bringing that back for consideration to council sometime in the spring. So based on that presentation, I thank you for your time. I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dana, council. Do we have any questions on the presentation before you? Counselor Thompson?
Anyway, this is a very serious problem, and I guess we're not unique with respect to this, and in fact, we made a motion through this council a couple of months ago about saying to the federal government, provincial government, regional government, and municipalities to get together and come up with a plan and the money to offset the homeless problems. We're unique in Niagara Falls because of the old 50 and 60 motels, and we got people flooding in here because of low income, homeless or whatever, and creating this problem. So what you're suggesting now is just the Lundys Lane area?
No, we're suggesting this approach for those hotels and motels who are seeking to convert for a legal option under your zoning bylaw, and this would be citywide.
So, but for motels?
Yes.
You're not talking about boarding houses?
No, this would be for the conversion of the motels and hotels.
Yeah, well, we got another problem with boarding houses, individual residential areas. I have one that I've been dealing with for six months or longer. They got 10 individual rooms rented out, they got six or seven cars parked out in front and creating a really serious problem. And you talked about the, what you did in your report, 2.2 vacancy rate in the city never happened before, and one of our biggest problems is people buying existing houses for sale and converting them to vacation rentals, Airbnbs, and they're all taken up. I had a meeting with Niagara Falls Tourism, which I'm the chairman, a month ago with the police, the regional social services, all of the Project Share, all of them together to discuss this issue, to try to come forth with some, particularly in the wintertime, out of the cold type facilities, which I guess they've moved forward with. But I, I think that we, is there anybody, anyplace else that has similar situation that has some other ideas and suggestion on how to overcome this, or is it all of the government levels coming together and saying, "We're going to try to solve this problem"?
Thank you, through your worship. There are certainly other jurisdictions who have addressed this problem in many different ways. From our case study work, it's actually interesting that contextually, there's some similarities with areas just outside of Orlando, Florida, where there's some older motels and hotels that have now been sort of, I won't say displaced, but are now not the prominent areas for tourism as you move closer to some of the more modern, larger hotel facilities, which in some ways is a similar context. Many of those are being used for housing, for employees, for the tourism area. Many of them are being used by agencies for transitional housing. They have different, obviously, legislation, different zoning practices, very different than ours. So we did look at that just in terms of context. What we did found, find in some other areas, somewhat in Toronto and areas of Vancouver, where there's older motels and hotels, the land economics context is a little bit different in terms of the timing. So you have those older units being purchased for actual demolition and redevelopment for other mixed-use developments, and we know that in this particular area, that's also something that's trending and moving forward, and likely in a few years, we'll start to see happen, and I think the importance is the provision of the housing now in those units and how we address it now in this short-term period. I think based on the information that we looked at, we think this is an appropriate approach to, again, enable an option for those uses to be converted, to be appropriately providing housing to the individuals that are there, because we certainly know right now that as a use that's not recognized as a legal use, the city's hands are tied in terms of enforcement. We heard that actually from services, we heard that from the community agencies, I think some of whom are here, in terms of the provision of services they provide that could actually be provided more centralized in some of these facilities if that were to be the change that goes forward. So I do concur, it is a very sort of dynamic, challenging issue. It's one piece of a larger issue. Certainly, we recognized in our report, the recommendation that other levels of government need to look at this issue because it is not just isolated to the city, there are other areas where it's taking place.
Anyway, I know, I don't know whether Dave's going to speak, but they have some concerns about this, and I like the idea that at least they have the opportunity over the next several months to have input, and this will be coming back to council to deal with. Very serious problem, and we're unique because of our destination tourism and the old section of Lundys Lane. And I know there's people who are concerned about limiting their opportunity to sell or change, that would be a pretty serious problem. Anyway, we got some time to debate and discuss it and have their input, which is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. When Alex asked me to represent council for this process, I didn't have a clue what I was getting myself into. This is a huge problem, and I think that we've brought it to a point where we do have a solution. Personally, I think it's only half of the solution. The other half is, let me give you an example. When Helga and I were in Costa Rica, the president realized that there was a lot of retired people sitting around watching their TVs in small villages, and she decided that the best thing for them was to create different activity centers or use present activity centers and provide free transportation to these people. And what it did is it allowed the people to get out of that situation, which what we're setting up here, this would provide free transportation through the busing to the YMCA. It could take someone to the Senior Citizen Center for the programs that they have there. There are other programs that we have in our community that could help move this to the next level. I commend the work these people have done. I think it's just fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I've got Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I guess I want to start off by saying that I truly believe that probably a little bit more than a year ago, when council decided to implement the interim control bylaw and study the situation, that we made the right decision. I don't think any of us at the time really had a good grasp on the issue, and I don't know whether or not all of us still do at this point. I know the report just came out to us on Thursday, and it has been a lot to digest. Initially, I know we talked about the Lundys Lane BIA, and now it looks like the zoning bylaw is going to cover the entire city. Personally, I like the notion of hearing a little bit more from the stakeholders. I like the notion of, you know, going to the different BIAs that do represent the city, because ultimately, I think it's going to affect all of them. So that would be my preference at this point. So before I choose an option, I'd like some more public input. Those are my comments, and I think Counselor Thompson is of the same opinion. So when you're looking for a motion, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Well, is there any other comments? Counselor Inoney?
Thank you. It's a good report, and I have to say that through you, Counselor Campbell, we knew what you were getting into when you had to chair that. We'd spent 80 days running and out of the cold shelter on something we had absolutely no clue on what we were doing. I will say that as we talk around this table about stakeholders, to me, the most important stakeholders are the people living in the single-room occupancies. We're talking, we're talking very generic as if, as if we're talking about tables or widgets or things. They're people. Some of, you have families living in a single-room occupancy motel. I know of a family who has four kids living in a single, and two parents living in a single-room occupancy hotel. I think it would be great to get to a dwelling use if it's affordable for that family who can only afford a single-room occupancy use. And imagine, we are all leaving this council chamber tonight, going back to our houses. How lucky are we? Because that's not the, that is not the reality for thousands of people living in this city, and while we don't want to highlight it, that's the issue we have. We have AJ here, Healy here, who works with them. We dealt with them with the 80 days. So we have to keep remembering, we're talking about people here. And that's, when you talk about engage the stakeholders, I don't care about anybody other than the people living in those units. So when you spoke to Project Share and the YW and As I Watcher, and every one of them said the same thing, it's a crisis in this city. Your community organization said demolitions and conversions to student housing have resulted in the displacement of people. We need to remember that, it's people. Boarding houses are being used as permanent housing. Nobody ever grew up, as a little kid grew up and said, "I want to live in a single-room occupancy, little room with nothing but a bed and a bathroom because I have nothing." And we have to remember, the people we're talking about have nothing or less than, and it's heartbreaking when you have to, when you have to realize that when they leave your shelter, they're going to nothing. And we saw people in the shelter who lived in the single-room occupancies who weren't homeless, they had somewhere to sleep that night, but they had nothing to eat, and they, and it wasn't warm, and they'd come and they'd eat and they'd stay in the shelter, and then they'd go home at the last moment when they had to. So I think we need to keep remembering that we're not talking about things here. So the decisions we make are going to impact thousands of people in this community, and it's not one level of government, it's all four of us. Because we can't, when we did it at the time, it was, it's not our responsibility, it's the regions. But when you were bringing the people in off the cold and they were sleeping on the floor, crying and telling us, "Thank you, we'd have froze to death out there," you understand, it's really all of our, it takes a village. So, I mean, rather than handing it off to different levels of government and worrying about who we're going to offend or where we're going to put them, maybe we just need to find someplace to put them. Fort Erie is looking at tiny houses. I am a tiny house fanatic. I watch the communities doing that. We have communities across Canada who have solved their homelessness problem with housing-first strategies and tiny home strategies. There are ways for us to do it, but I think we have to keep remembering when we're doing it, we are doing it for people, not for, not for glory, not for, not for anything other than we want the best for those who have nothing. That's very important to me. And I think your report was great, and I'm glad to see the stakeholders who participated. But did you talk to people who live in the motel?
So I threw you, your worship, to the council. I did want to address that. Very early on at the TAC meeting, we talked about stakeholder consultation, and absolutely our priority was to be able to understand from the perspective of those individuals living in the units, what their issues and challenges were. With respect to the agencies, many of them through the region, we were asked not to do- many of them through the region, we were asked not to do that for privacy concerns. So we did meet through the agencies to get those perspectives, and we asked the agencies to collect that information from them. So we did not meet with them individually to respect privacy. We also did not attend on the sites internally, again, to respect privacy and trespass. But we did have the opportunity to observe people living in those units, and we are aware of the state of some of those units. And I think that social housing lens that we put on this work was probably the most important. And that's, I can't underestimate that, why that is so important to have a solution that addresses that, I think, first and foremost.
And I'd like to recommend to anybody around this table, and for the, for our new councillors coming in, there are outreach programs. I go out on the outreach truck, and you just got to do it for one night, one night, to have your whole, your whole lens change. We have no clue really how bad it is until you go out on that one night, and you're feeding a little kid who wants five bowls of soup, and you kind of want to give him the whole pot. And you realize that they're going back to sleep in a motel with nothing. So I'm glad, and we've met a lot of them, and in the outreach program, we've met a lot of them. But I just wondered if they were represented in here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question before, and then if there's no other comments, then we'll entertain a motion. Are there any other comments, by the way, of council? Yeah, councillor Morocco?
Through you, your worship, I just want to say thank you very much for this presentation. And to add on to councillor Iannone, there is a great need for people to live in a shelter and have a place they can call home. And we all know that's the Maslow theory, that social needs. I'm not a big proponent of tent cities or even shelters, because at the end of the day, everybody has a right to have a place that they can call home. I think also that, you know, as we move forward and we provide people with a place that they can call home, there's a bigger problem that still underlies that we tend to not really talk about. And as being one of the founding members of the Community Health Centre years ago, and still very active in community health centers, those are the organizations that are out on the streets, the outreach workers such as A.J., and the problems that we're having constantly dealing with mental health. So it's the problem of trying to make sure that once we try and get them into a care facility, and I think that's where we really have to push the government of all levels, is for the funding to help mental health. And I know that councillor Val Patty from the region has been very active in housing, because she's not on that committee, and also dealing with mental health and schizophrenia. So I think that let's not forget that that really has to play a factor in all of this. It's a big package. So I really appreciate, that's just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments of council? So I just had a couple of questions, Dana, for you. The one question I had is, and I don't know if your studies show this or not, are we having a migration of displaced people or homeless to Niagara Falls because of the motel inventory that we have? Are they coming from other areas of the region? Or is this Niagara Falls people in Niagara Falls? What exactly is happening?
No, I believe from, I think the research and the information we obtained through the agencies, that this is a migration of people from various areas. It also includes individuals from the city, but it's not just city individuals. It's people coming from other areas where affordability has pushed them out to an area now with these forms, that that is the only unit that they can afford to live in. So it's a combination. But the one thing I would say is that the need is great. And I know with some of the agencies who are utilizing the units through contracts, that they have waiting lists, and they just cannot accommodate the need, even with the supply that is out there today, that, again, we need to look at to ensure that it's appropriate and legal and safe and proper for these individuals.
So in other words, I guess what I'm getting at is, it's more of a regional issue that's being put on Niagara Falls' shoulders. So I'm thinking, we're going to have to go back to the region financially to help with this situation, because it's obvious what's happening. We have the motels, so people are coming here from other places, and they're not leaving. And of course, we have to make sure they have food and shelter and all the things that they need, and counseling for mental health problems. But I just wonder, are we solving this problem, or is this problem going to get worse as more people are going to migrate to Niagara Falls with this solution? And I don't even know if you have the answer, but it's just one of the thoughts that comes to mind.
Through you, your worship, I don't think through this we're solving the broader problem. It's a very small piece. I would say that the other municipalities, from at least the regional perspective, are experiencing some of this as well in some of their motels or hotels. But it's the magnitude of the number of facilities in Niagara Falls that provides for that significant number of units to accommodate that need. It's very, you know, it exists in other municipalities within the region, but not to the degree that it does here.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I had was, I know we've referenced the Lundys Lane BIA many times. Is a reason that we haven't engaged the other BIAs, since this is going to be a citywide study that we're doing?
I believe in the scope and the terms of reference, the focus was on, as I showed with the mapping, the majority of the units were in the Lundys Lane area, and under the area of the Lundys Lane BIA. There are some other facilities that we looked at outside of that area, that I believe some are in other BIAs, but I think it's only one. Most of the others are on peripheral areas outside of a BIA.
Thank you. All right, well, if there's no, excuse me, further comments, we're looking for a motion. Councillor Peter Angelo, you suggested you had a motion?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. The only motion I was going to make is that we, go ahead and have a couple of public meetings and invite stakeholders to give us their input on the options that we're looking at here. And perhaps we can reach out as well to the different agencies that currently use the motels, to ask them their opinions on the options. Maybe put something on their website that would allow people just access to give their input as to the decision that we're facing. And, you know, hopefully in the new year, it can be brought back to us, and then we can make a decision.
Okay, okay. So moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Thompson, comment by councillor Campbell.
I will support that if it's along the guidelines that we see here in terms of next steps. Because these people have to move forward. So if we have it in the guidelines, which are final amendments to council, April 2019, that's great.
April 2019, I have no problem.
Could you repeat the motion, either Mr. Clerk or councillor Peter Angelo, would you prefer?
It would benefit me if he also repeated the motion.
Okay. Would you mind repeating the motion, councillor?
Hey, your worship, my motion was simply just to have a couple of public meetings and invite stakeholders and people to give their input on the options that council's facing right now, to reach out to some of the agencies that might use these motels to get their input on some of the options that we're facing. And also to put it in accessible places, like the city's website, so that we can receive some comments that way. And it could be brought back to us in the new year, and then council can choose one of the options.
Okay. Everybody heard that? Just want to make sure clarity. Okay, yeah, councillor?
Thank you. I just want to read the agencies that have already been consulted. Project Share, YWCA, Boys and Girls Club, Niagara Falls Community Health Center, and the region. Who else do you want? Like, we should have done this last year. Like, we are so far behind in dealing with this issue. And it's the least fortunate who are hoping we make some sort of go-forward decision. So who are you looking for, who are more important stakeholders than the agencies that are being utilized by these, by people who are less fortunate?
Yeah, your worship, I mean, I'm not here to answer the questions, but the agencies have commented on the process itself. They haven't commented on the options that council are facing right now.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Well, I know that councillor Iannone has already said she doesn't care about any of the people who are operating the hotels, just the homeless. We are responsible for the community. And I know one BIA has been involved, and it affects everybody. So we're public consultation and input could improve the situation. So I second the motion and feel very comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Iannone?
Thank you. Through you to the presenter, have the agencies, the social assistance agencies, the agencies that are listening here, have they all had comment on your recommendations?
Yes. So throughout the process, those agencies were circulated with the initial draft report with the options, and they've commented on the final recommendation. So we have received input from all of those who were engaged, whether they were through the TAC or the commenting agencies, including the regional staff and city staff.
And they supported, and city staff, and they supported your option A?
Supported the recommended option, yes. They had questions about some of the elements, yes.
Okay. So if we support option A tonight, support the recommendation, that doesn't mean tomorrow hotels are going to be designated, single-room occupancy, motels are going to be single-room occupancy. It's just going to move us to the next step, correct?
Yes. As I indicated, there would be a series of requirements for additional public process before any changes were made to implement that option. And that would include additional opportunity and consultation through those steps to look at that option, draft the regulations for that option. An example would be where the hybrid option might be something that's further considered. We receive additional comments, and we could provide that to council through that process, and there may be further amendments to that implementation. So that would be addressed through that process, yes.
So it would give the Lundys Lane BIA more opportunity to have input and consultation?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm not going to support the motion, and if it fails, I'll move recommendation A.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Thompson. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and opposed, with one declared conflict. Okay, so it passes. So thank you very much, folks. Appreciate all your work on this. Now we're going to move down to the first public meeting, and I would ask the city clerk to please introduce the next item on the agenda.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed city-initiated amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to correct the minimum setbacks and permit a single detached dwelling on vacant parcel of land located on the south side of Lyons Creek, opposite Stanley Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on October 13, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment, or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets that are located outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Now I ask our director of planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Yes, thank you, your worship. It says the clerk outlined, it's a housekeeping matter to correct the provisions for rear yard and side yard for a property on the south side of Lyons Creek Road, just sort of the foot of Stanley Avenue. The property itself is 2.3 hectares. There's vacant land to the north, there's a golf course to the northeast. There are residential properties to the east and west of this property. It backs on to Lyons Creek. Council considered a zoning amendment application in July of this year for the property to allow for a single detached dwelling. Staff brought forward a bylaw in August of this year. And after that bylaw was passed, unfortunately noticed that there were two errors made. We had written into the bylaw a 70-meter rear yard, whereas a 51-meter rear yard was intended. And the side yard on the east side was written as 10-meter setback, whereas 8.5 meters is intended. So this amendment is to correct the previously included regulations. So basically, it shows the two areas here. So the distance behind the proposed dwelling is shown with a red outline. The, and the distance then would be from the back of that house to the very far extent of the property line, and then the east lot line from the edge of the house to the lot line on the east side. So those are the dimensions that should have been included. And so basically, it's a housekeeping amendment to apply these regulations, and therefore, we're asking that council approve this city-initiated zoning bylaw amendment to reflect the intended and previously approved rear yard and side yard that was considered by this council. And we have the amending bylaw on tonight's council agenda, so that there is no further time lost for the property owner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Are there any questions of council? Kissing none, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal, as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anybody here other than the applicant? Kissing none. If there's no other questions, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Strange, that we move the report. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now going to move along to 7.2 of our public meeting. I would now ask the city clerk if he'd introduce the next item on the agenda.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a draft plan of subdivision and to consider proposed amendments to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit 97 lots for single detached dwellings, 17 blocks for 94 on-street townhouse dwelling units, two blocks for 56-block townhouse dwelling units, a block for a park, and blocks for environmental protection, stormwater management, road widening, and 0.3-meter reserves. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on October 13, 2018, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the draft plan of subdivision and the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets that are located outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to ask our director of planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed draft plan, official plan, and zoning bylaw amendment.
Yes, thank you, your worship. This application is by River Realty. It's for 36 acres of land, 14.7 hectares of land on the south side of McLeod Road and along the west side of Garner Road. It's right at the city's urban boundary, so there's a green line on the map in front of you. That represents the urban boundary. It comes east-west across McLeod Road and then north along Garner Road. There's an auto repair shop on the corner of the subject property. There are residential uses to the northeast of this, immediately to the north and to the west of this property are agricultural uses. On the east side of Garner Road are a business, a couple of properties belonging to business, beyond which is the Boys and Girls Club. There are a number of woodlots and provincially significant wetlands adjacent to this property. And the property also is within the Thompson Creek watershed, which is shown on the map. And the servicing would be coming through the Warren Woods Phase 5 development, which is to the southeast of this property. The applicant has applied to divide the land into 97 lots for single-family houses, 94 lots for street townhouses, and then two blocks of townhouses providing approximately 56 units. There are also blocks set aside for park, stormwater management, environmental protection area, and there are road widenings and one-foot reserves adjacent to those widenings. One proposal is to amend the official plan, is to adjust the boundaries for the medium-density housing. Apologize for the small scale, but on the map, this blue box and this yellow box on the corner is where the official plan identifies multifamily to occur. The developer wants to put single where the blue box is, but in replacement for that, he's introducing this larger area in the middle of the plan. So all of what is shown is yellow, would now be medium-density housing, and then the balance of the property would be for the single-family and open space areas. You're also seeking permission to advance the plan ahead of a watershed plan for Thompson's Creek. They supplied a watershed management plan, which is acceptable, and the... They supplied a watershed management plan, which is acceptable, and therefore, we would be applying a conditions in the draft plan of subdivision that the ultimate design of that watershed management be reviewed by the region and the city. The applicant is also seeking then to change the zoning from development holding to an R3 zone, which would be for the detached dwellings and for the street townhouses. There'd be special provisions accompanying that, as well, they've applied for an R4 zone to be applied to the two blocks, which would be the group multiple, which are block townhouses, and then as well, we have zoning of open space and environmental protection for the parkland and stormwater areas. So, on this map in front of you, the 97 single-family houses, the color is a bit light, so it might be very discernible, so the single-family houses are basically along the periphery of the development. The street townhouses are central to that, that's why we're amending the official plan to recognize that street townhouses would be in this area, as I said, it's a larger area than if it'd just been a strip along Lundys Lane, and then there are two blocks of land that would be available for block townhouses. So, that's kind of your standard type of townhouse. The, there is a 2-kilometer arc for SciTech setback, so therefore, SciTech required that there be no housing in this area, therefore, this area was identified for the stormwater pond. There is a provincially significant wetland, just as a ribbon along the south boundary of the property, so that is to be protected. There is a 10-meter buffer, or 30-meter buffer, rather, along that, and then between the buffer and the single-family houses is another 10-meter buffer that's basically a swale and protection for that wetland. And then the city park is proposed in this location with frontage on the arterial road. So, those are the designs, elements of this plan of subdivision. We did have a neighborhood open house, the businesses on the opposite side of the street did come out and asked about the compatibility of these uses, and so, there was a compatibility study done, which would require a noise wall, that's part of the conditions of draft plan approval for this, it's included in the appendix to the report. As well, there'd be certain requirements for the housing relative to the noise that may be generated by the business across the street. We did review this with respect to the provincial policy statement and growth plan, we found that this is a greenfield area and an urban boundary, it will achieve a density of 45 people and jobs per hectare, and when combined with other developments in the Garner South Secondary Plan, will achieve a 55 unit per hectare, 55, sorry, people and jobs per hectare ratio, which is in accordance with the region's requirements. The adjacent natural heritage features, PSW and the stormwater will all be part of environmental protection, and then I mentioned already, the land use compatibility, butting the light industry to the east will be achieved through a noise barrier, as well as dwelling construction techniques and warning clauses, those are all part of the conditions. This development does contribute to the city's supply of building lots and does provide for a range of housing types. The official plan, I mentioned the changes to the official plan policy to allow this development to advance in, before the Thompson Creek watershed study is actually done. The watershed is actually a very large area, immediately to the south, this is the head water, and so, the study that was done by the developer was acceptable to the region, but it will require a detailed grading and stormwater plot plan be submitted to the region, the MPCA, and to SciTech before the registration of the plan can occur. Also, they requested the phasing of this plan, there's a large area at the southwest corner of Kayler Road and McCloud, formerly known as the Badger Property, that property has not developed, but is in an earlier phase, but the services for the Warren Woods are already extended to Garner Road, and so, therefore, services are adequate to accommodate this particular development, so we find that it is acceptable to advance this phase at this point. And then, we already mentioned the reconfiguration of the low-density and medium-density blocks to reflect the development as proposed, and that's acceptable, again, because the medium-density housing areas are contiguous with the arterial roads. The secondary plan, or the subdivision meets the minimum density requirements, the lots proposed comply with the density as expected under the city's low-density designation, the proposed on-street townhouses comply with the regulations for residential medium-density. There are 16 lots that have reversed lot frontages on McCloud Road, and while we try to discourage that, there are only 16 of those lots, and the lands immediately to the north are agricultural uses, so we do not expect there to be a serious impact. The PSW will be protected by a naturalized buffer, and the dwellings are all located outside of the 2-kilometer arc established to respect the SciTech operations. The bylaw itself, as I mentioned, there's a proposed change from development holding and light industrial to an R3 zone with site-specific provisions, so the lots are slightly smaller than the standard sizes, but they are actually larger than our R1F zone, which covers the majority of Warren Woods. So, these lots are bigger than what's been built in Warren Woods, slightly smaller than what we've traditionally established, but again, they do reflect an adequate lot size and lot setbacks in order to provide for dwellings to be constructed. Within the block areas, the applicant has asked for the R4 zone, and again, the provisions are slightly different, whereas the standard would be 250 square meters for a townhouse, the proposal is for 200 square meters for a townhouse. The setbacks for the lot frontage are the same for one of the blocks and four meters less for one of the second blocks. Again, this has to do with the configuration in order to get the depth-to-width ratio, and then the rear yard area for the townhouses, rather than the standard 7.5, they're looking for six meters in certain locations and 2.8 meters, that would be a privacy yard area, and then the building height is 1.5 meters rather than half the building height. The standard setback for a detached dwelling would be 1.2 meters, so 1.5 meters is actually slightly, excuse me, slightly larger than our standard for detached dwellings. The subdivision design, as I said, does contain a mix of detached on-street townhouses, block townhouses, has areas for park, stormwater management, environmental protection. Their park lot will be dedicated to the city for recreational purposes. I mentioned the naturalized 15-meter buffer to assist in the protection of the PSW, they will maintain the flows to Thompson Creek, and that is a condition within the appendix A to this report. The warning clause relative to SciTech's presence to the south, that's fairly standard for all of this Garner neighborhood, just to alert people to their activities. There are additional conditions, well, the extension of services from Warren Woods, so the developer will have to extend the services north on Garner Road up to this development, and because it's outside of the subdivision, it requires actually a separate development agreement, and that's what that condition would apply to. So, it's our conclusion that the proposal does comply with the provincial policy statement, the regional policies, in achieving the medium-density targets for greenfield, the requested changes to the Garner South Secondary Plan are acceptable, the rezoning of the wetlands and buffer to environmental protection at the south end of the subdivision, and the implementing protection measures for the natural heritage features are all appropriate, and the proposed zoning regulations for the residential lots and blocks will allow for a compact form of development, and the open space does provide for the recreational uses. Therefore, we are recommending the council approve the amendment to the official plan, to approve the amendment to the zoning bylaw, to approve the plan of subdivision, subject to the draft conditions in appendix A, that the mayor or his designate be authorized to sign the approved plan 20 days after giving notice. The draft approval will be given for a period of three years, that will lapse unless an extension is requested, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the subdivision agreement. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. We have questions of council, Councilor Thompson?
Yes, the report must have been written by local staff. I see they spelled Thompson without the P. I had nothing to do with that drainage area. It's with a P. Anyway, I noticed that Mr. Ralph Terrio sent in a letter regarding the property next door, and he was asking about the drainage. I think you probably addressed that in your comments. He was concerned about the drainage affecting his property next door, and also, it's a zone industrial, and he was concerned, and suggested in his letter that there'd be a berm and a fence to protect his property. You didn't address that, do you have any comments about that?
Mr. Hurlovich?
Well, normally, we don't require a fence behind single-family houses, but we certainly could attach that as a condition of draft plan approval for the west side. If that's possible, did you say? Location now?
Does Mr. Terrio have anybody representing him tonight?
One more, another one. So, I believe Mr. Terrio's property is here immediately.
Yes, it is.
And so, the drainage area, the stormwater pond is here, and the intent is for that to drain naturally through the woodlot, and that is to be a controlled feature, but what you're saying then is, so he has concerns about drainage coming from this? That would be designed and have to be approved by the region and the conservation authority to ensure that it is for his property, and pre and post development flows have to equal, so there would be no more water leaving this property and reaching Thompson Creek than currently exists.
Okay, I have nothing against the development. I see the letter.
Okay.
And was there any dialogue or discussion with respect to Terrio's request?
I didn't have any specific direct dialogue with him, no.
Okay.
I don't know whether someone else in my office spoke specifically to him.
Okay, well, maybe you can ask a question.
Any other questions of council at this point? Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral that receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed draft plan, official plan, zoning bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council and city staff. We agree with the planning department's recommendation for approval of the official plan, zoning bylaw amendment, and application for draft plan approval. Mr. Hurlovich has gone through all the details of the subdivision application, so I don't think there's any need for me to add anything further to that effect. With respect to Mr. Terrio's request, we will have to comply and ensure that all drainage from the site will have to leave, will be contained on our site through rear yard swales, stormwater system, and then will have to drain into the stormwater pond, and then through into the Thompson's Creek. He referenced in his letter an example of a berm and a fence on a Lundys Lane property, Camp Park, and I believe the reason, and I'm not familiar with the details of that development, but I believe the reason for that berm and fence was the proximity of the railway tracks and not necessarily for stormwater. So, other than that, we believe the proposal to be sound, and we would respectfully request council's support of the recommendation.
So, your position on Mr. Terrio's request is what?
I don't think there's necessarily a need for a berm and a fence, we'll have rear yard swales there, and all the storm water will be directed through the stormwater system through the rear yard swales. There will be no stormwater that'll drain.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilor Thompson, did you want to comment?
No, I think he was, the other part of his question was, it's going to be industrial, in fact, I think he's had some interest in putting up a large industrial building there, and he didn't want this residential development to affect what he's doing with his property. In fact, it might even, if it's going to be that way, be worthwhile with the sale of the lots be protected, the same as they did with the property.
Fernwood, yeah. Okay, well, we'll leave it to the motion. Any other questions or comments regarding the report? Okay, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of subdivision, official plan, and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. A look for a motion? Councilor Morocco? Motion by Councilor Morocco to move the recommendation. Do we have a seconder? Okay, Councilor Campbell? Any discussion to the motion? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Okay, thank you. So, those following along in the agenda, we're at 7.3, public meeting, and I will now ask our city clerk if he would introduce the next item on the agenda.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at 7711 Green Vista Gate. Under provincial regulations, public notice and the holding of a public meeting are not required prior to council approving a standard plan of condominium. Matters of public interest were addressed at the zoning approval stage and the site plan stage. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the proposed plan of condominium shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets that are located outside the council chamber.
Now, I ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose of the application.
Thank you, Worship. The, yeah, this is a plan of subdivision for a 10-story apartment building that's located on the end of Green Vista Gate within the Thundering Waters Golf Course community, so there's a golf course immediately to the north and east of this property, that butts the railway line, and to the kind of northeast are townhouses beyond which are single detached dwellings. The applicant has requested approval of a standard plan of condominium with a 10-story building currently under construction, there are 150 units within the apartment building. The site plan for the property, while it's difficult to read, Green Vista Gate is located here, it's a private condominium road, which will provide the access into the property, there's a drop-off area here at the front of the building, the building itself is located in this location, and then this shows- The building itself is located in this location, and then this shows the surface parking lots that are proposed. There's a landscaped area here, landscaped area in this location. For those who are familiar with the Golf Course, this is the 18th hole, and it's just behind the townhouse units to the northeast. The site plan agreement already registered on this property in May of this year. There is, that reviewed the requirements for the driveway, visitor parking, landscaping, and amenity areas. They were all addressed as part of that requirement. There's a 10-story, 150-unit building under construction, which I mentioned. We looked at the application relative to compliance with the planning documents, and the development does comply with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the Places to Grow for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, complies with the region's official plan. The development is in conformity with the city's official plan and zoning bylaw as amended and varied, and I say varied because it was a variance to allow a partial 11th floor for recreational facilities on the top of the building. The plan of condominium, once registered, would allow for the individual sale of the dwelling units, and the city and region's interests are to be addressed through the fulfillment of the conditions of draft plan approval. Those are contained in Appendix A to the report. Therefore, we are recommending that the council approve the standard plan of condominium for the property, that the mayor or his designate be authorized to sign the draft plan within 20 days of giving notice, that the draft plan approval be given for a period of three years, and that any extension will have to be granted by councils, and that the mayor or clerk be authorized to sign the condominium agreement. Those are the highlights of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. Any questions of council? Counselor Morocco?
Yes, through you, Worship, to Alec. I believe that 90% of the condos are already sold. Is that it?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Oh, Counselor Kerrio?
Just a quick question. I asked the developer if Mr. Hurlovich doesn't know, but as a condominium, how much more tax will we collect on each unit as opposed to if they were an apartment building?
Is there a change in assessment?
Yeah, is there a change in assessment, Mr. Hurlovich? Or would that be Ms. Clerk?
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, I'll ask the developer.
Change in assessment, yeah.
Do you know that, Ms. Clerk? Is there a change in assessment? I don't know if you have that at your fingertips. If it's a part...
I still don't calculate any.
Okay. Anyone want to take a best guess? Is, if it's a condo versus an apartment, do we get more taxes? That's the question.
To you, Mr. Mayor. If you remember, counsel, back a number of years ago, we had a number of conversions from apartments to condos, and part of the reason for doing it at the time, it was favorable for the owners to have it assessed as condo rather than as an apartment. So there was less assessment attracted through the condo dwellings is the reason why a lot of apartments went that way.
They could sell the units when it went that way. Because I was one of them, and I had buildings on Huggins, and then I made them into condos in the city. I thought that as a whole after, the city would benefit more if there would be more, and you added up all the individual condos out of the one apartment building.
I think it's actually the other way.
It's good to know. Maybe we'll get some more information on that. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to proposed draft plan of condominium. Is there anyone here other than the applicant? He's seeing none. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Is the applicant here? Okay, I guess the applicant has chosen just to go with the staff report? Okay. How do you, how do you change perfection, right? So the public meeting with respect to proposed plan of condominium is now concluded, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. There's no further discussion. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you very much. Okay, now we go to our Section 8, our reports. First report, 8.1, monthly tax receivables report.
Could I move any July, August, September reports?
That's a great idea. July, August, September, so right to 8.3. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you.
I'd also move the account.
Okay, 8.4, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Kerrio. All those in favor? And that's approved, thank you.
8.5.
8.5, cancellation or a reduction or refund of taxes, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Thank you. 8.6, naming and renaming of parks and streets, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Worship, I just had a question. I was wondering why the report was on our agenda, because the report just kind of describes what the policy is. But if this was a response to a formal request for a report that was asking the question of why there were two names in particular that actually didn't comply with our policy, it says nothing of those two names in the actual report. So I'm wondering if this is a response to that motion, or if this is just simply stating the policy, and that report is still to come.
Okay. Tiffany?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. You're right, Counselor Peter Angelo, and you, the wrong version is attached in your agenda. So I do have one that does speak to that. I don't know if you want me to read it, or do you want maybe to include it in the December meeting?
Probably the December meeting would be fine.
Okay. Because it does, yeah, you are absolutely right, and all that information is in this one, including the tieback to Dan O'Connor and Don Neet.
That makes sense.
Did you want to refer this to the next meeting, or?
That's fine. She said she'll put it in.
Just put it on?
In December?
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything with this report?
Just a motion for deferral to...
Yeah, we need to defer it then.
We receive a file, defer.
Whatever your pleasure. Okay, a motion to defer by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? And that's approved, thank you. 8.7, NS&amp;T Trail signage project. Looking for a motion?
Yeah, Worship.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, excuse me, Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? And that's approved, thank you. 8.8, intelligent incident cameras. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Crater. All those in favor? That's approved. 8.9, Bukater Drive and Rapids View Drive Sewer Separation Project update. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. 8.10, Kayler Road Widening Dedication. Moved by Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in, do you want to speak to it, Counselor?
Just to send a thank you to Mark Bassiano for giving the land to us without cost. That was unusual to see that in a report.
Yeah, that's great. Do you want to make that part of the, do you want to make that part of the motion?
Is that a letter? Yes.
Yeah, okay. We'll make that part of the friendly amendment. Okay, good. You're good with that? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved with a bouquet of flowers and a friendly there. 8.11, New South and Bulk Water Station.
I'd move the...
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Anoni. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. 8.12, Robinson Street Bridge Removal Municipal Class EA Project.
Move the...
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. 8:13, Request for Removal of Part Lot Control, North Side of Tallgrass Avenue. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. 8:14, Matters arising from Municipal Heritage Committee Designated Property Grant Repointing of Small Stone Building. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. 8:15, Applicant Habitat for Humanity Proposal for Future Residential Development. We have a report, and we have a request to speak.
I'm going to find Mr. DeLuca.
Okay, yeah. So motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Crater, sorry, to allow Mr. DeLuca to come address council?
Are we in favor?
Pardon me?
Are we in favor?
Oh, I'll call the vote. All's in favor, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Deodaddy and members of council for letting me to speak. Before I begin, I'd like to point out some definitions about the report, and one of them is, the definition is negligent, and it's not being careful or giving enough attention to people that are your responsibility. Inaccuracy is the quality or state of not being correct, and violation is a failure to do what is required or expected by law. Now, I'd like to speak about the report. It's an inaccuracy to say that I appeared at the special council meeting on September 17th. I was denied that right to speak, which is a violation of the Municipal Act. I gave notice to speak well before the 48-hour notice. I asked to speak on the repeal of the bylaw well within the 20-day appeal period. It is an inaccuracy to say that I represented my father, who passed away two and a half years ago. I represented my uncle, Santo Paula, who in turn owned my grandmother's house, which they've lived in since 1967. It's inaccurate, it's an accuracy to say that the committee was satisfied with the number of parking spaces. No one could confirm a site visit. There is an occupancy of the church of 200, which means 40 parking spaces, which they could not even legally place 20 in the new space. We've complained five times to the bylaw enforcement, and it looks like they still not have verified the occupancy. Some were negligent in their duty. After the fifth time, church officials are witness taking out the bunch of seats out the back door. It's negligent on behalf of the planning department not to honor a request in two different forms. In front of eight residents during the committee of adjustment meeting, we asked that we be notified any time that Habitat for Humanity appeared on the council agenda. They agreed in front of six residents at the LPAT, which will be appealed. We again asked the city lawyer and planning staff representative to notify us any time Habitat for Humanity was to appear at the council agenda. Now, I'll address the reasons why we wanted to be here every time that Habitat was here, based on the speech that I was going to make on September 17th. What made matters worse was Habitat for Humanity appeared twice on the agenda on that special meeting, where $50,000 in a development charge were waived, and that I basically would call bonusing. It is an inaccuracy to state that our concerns appear to rest primarily with the future development of lands. In fact, it is the opposite. Our concerns are the direct result of the processes leading up to today. With these inaccuracies, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable with the writer's grasp of the situation. Under Ontario law, configuration of a lot on a plan of subdivision cannot be altered, even if it is to add land to it. Therefore, bylaw passed by council is necessary in order to remove the lot from the plan of subdivision, also known as deeming the lot to be not be part of a lot on a plan of subdivision. Hence, the term deeming. The removal of lot from the plan then allows the lot to merge with other lands that is will no longer be considered to be on the subdivision plan. A deeming bylaw application is required. A fee is required. Once received, the file is set up and assigned to the next available council meeting for the passing of bylaw. Any bylaw, including a deeming bylaw, is required to give some sort of notice within 30 days of passing. When it passes, there is a 20-day appeal period, after which the bylaw is registered at the registry office by a solicitor, at which point it will be considered effect, and the lands may merge. In some jurisdictions, a notice of decision is circulated to the assessed property or owners in the area. We know that wasn't done considering that I'm here tonight. Firstly, the Habitat for Humanity did not wait even seven days to register the property. Ironically, they registered the property the day after my first inquiry. Secondly, the city did not afford us an opportunity to appeal after several requests well before the appeal period ended. The violation occurred when I brought it to the attention of a legal staff, an opportunity for a fair hearing. We did not get that fair hearing. Where in passing a bylaw under this act, a council's required by this act, by the provisions of an official plan or otherwise bylaw, to afford any person an opportunity to make representation in respect to the subject matter of the bylaw. The council affords such person a fair opportunity to make representation, but throughout the course of passing the bylaw, the council shall deem to be performing a legislative, not a judicial function. Only reason I'm reading it is because this is exactly, I'm taking it word for word from the, from the act. Now, if we did have the hearing, this is what you would have heard, is, I will do my speech, it takes me a couple minutes, and if you can indulge me a little bit. I'd like to thank everybody for letting us speak tonight. I'd like to formally thank the counselors, Kerrio, Campbell, Thompson, Peter Angelo, and Mayor Deodaddy for reaching out to me in regards to the actions of bylaw PDB 2018-49 and DB-2018-003, presented to the city council on August 14th in regards to the properties behind Hawkins Street. I want to stress, through this rather quick turn of events, we encouraged city staff to invite Habitat for Humanity to this meeting. Obviously, that was never afforded to us during these last few months. We are asking for a reconsideration of the bylaw and a subsequent repeal of the bylaw. This will give you, us an opportunity to present our case, which was never given to you, and I want to stress, that information was never given to you. We have had made several inquiries within the 30-day period without any replies. We can provide you with the names and signatures of all the residents in the median area who are in support of this action, and some are here tonight. I'm speaking tonight because this is my grandmother's house. I played hours and hours of road hockey with my cousins right in the neighborhood and basically right in front of that proposed driveway. When these items were presented at the committee of adjustment, they were considered irrelevant, and we were asked to bring them up to council. At the time, the request in front of eight residents, a request was given to the planning staff at the committee of adjustment. They didn't object to our request, and we went on with the other reasons. These items were also brought at the LPAT meeting, and I stress this again because we did it twice. It's not like we did it, and the reason why we did it was because we wanted to bring these up. Every time Habitat for Humanity is going to come here, we're going to bring up these particular issues, and that's why we were so adamant about wanting to be at that meeting on September 17th. Our objections, we object to the circumstances surrounding the original purchase of the two properties. The original deal was struck as a one-hour sale, where the existing church, Oakwood Gospel Church, already struck a deal with Habitat for Humanity as a listing was found only to identify the landlord portion already touting nine townhouses to be built on it. The church sold over half their property to an entity for far less than their actual value. The appraised value is at least two times the purchase price. The transaction alone will have a negative impact on property values in the area. The church had what I consider an agreement, not signed, not official, a handshake agreement with my grandparents, and subsequently my uncle, who was the owner of 6680 Hawkins Street, that if the property was to go up for sale, they would first come to them. This is what's created a very bad faith situation. No conversations took place, and the first conversation occurred about the sale was at the committee adjustment meeting when we found out who owned the property at that time. The transaction and the communications were not so neighborly. If the proponent of the committee adjustment meeting was identified as Habitat, which it wasn't, the abutting landowner, it would have been relevant to ask questions about that particular sale. The real estate ad even only showed the landlord, landlocked portion of the property. Now, my uncle, and you know, this is something that is near and dear to me, is the fact is that, you know, this is a property that he's been over 50 years, lived beside, he's prevented fires, he's just helped them in regards to acts of vandalism of the property, and this is how they repay him. Post the applicant was not the proponent, as I had said. Habitat was listed on notices, it would have increased the concerns of the neighborhood. It was almost like they purposely did not put their name on the application and represented themselves under false pretenses. Adding to the confusion was the multiple people that were there at the committee of adjustment. There was a proponent, there was the planner, there was Habitat for Humanity, all at the table, representing all different portions of this one individual's request. The general public was subject to a dissertation from the Habitat planner explaining the wonderful virtues of Habitat, trying to sway favor with the committee. This was unnecessary, as the applicant was not Habitat for Humanity. All these entities were all on various documents, and the... and the actual reason for even the severance was unclear. The general public made inquiries about the church and Habitat and were described as irrelevant. The suggestion from other proponents that more changes are required, easements are going to be obtained, and obviously didn't sit well with us. The threat of the property falling into hands is just an idle threat. And that's what they actually asked us to, and told us that night. The city is going, now, the next objection is the city is actually going against Section 8, which is of their own consent policies, which clearly states consents will only be permitted when land fronts on a public road, which is an acceptable standard of construction. The land that being severed was clearly landlocked. In watching the video of the August 14th meeting, I found councillor Peter Angelo doing a good job of explaining it. And I also watched when Mr. Hurlovich came up, and none of our concerns were addressed. There is, and still is not, a set plan for property when it's already been determined it's residential, but no type, no number of how many units are going there. The explanation ranged from one unit to nine units, and to a threat of an apartment complex. Further discussion was the opportunity to add additional lands to the west and to the east. This required multiple meetings, severances. We were, at that point, we were just asking for one meeting to tell us what was going to happen. And during the LPAT meeting, the agent for Habitat produced a mysterious drawing of 18 townhouses. We never ever saw this document, ever. And it was expressed during the meeting that it was a document that was presented throughout the processes. This was a complete inaccuracy. Development does not conform to the neighborhood. And there are six similar types of large infill developments, either being built, proposed on that same side of the street. Each one of them fronts onto McLeod Road. Now, this is the only aspect of it that, for our purposes, was most important. From a development stage, we understand that this will be done in a zoning, but we already have identified the problem as it is. It's going to front on a very residential road. Every other project, every single project on McLeod Road, large-scale project, fronts onto McLeod Road, but not this one. And we already know that. And we know that eventually, you know, there's going to be, somebody's going to tell us right now that you got to wait till the zoning. Well, we already have identified at this stage, why wait for the zoning? The, like I said, there's no, absolutely no neighborhood support for the project. The seller of the property didn't show up. Didn't write a letter of support. Didn't even have a representative at the meeting. All eight citizens in attendance took the time out of their day, and each one of them fronts onto the front of this property. If we went around to the entire neighborhood, we'd get 100%, and in fact, numerous signatures on the petition. There was information or questions that were brought to the committee before and during the meeting that were not verified or answered. We only ask that be answered and verified to the relevance at a general meeting. During the presentation, a slide was presented that identified other properties, not even the properties that were there in there. Furthermore, the after the sale, which is what their normal practice is, they come and meet with the neighbors, tell them the project they want to do, and then go through the processes, which is exactly what we were asking for from day one. But, basically what happens is they're going to get all their approvals. They don't really care what city council does. They'll appeal it to the LPAT, and they'll get exactly what they want, and they'll get the max. And this is why we're here today. Because every time we've gone to these meetings, what we've been told is, wait till the zoning bylaw. Well, we're not waiting till the zoning bylaw, because we have the right as citizens to appeal the processes going forward. One of the biggest proponents of this, or one of the biggest objections we have is that it's bonusing. As a for-profit organization, or if you're a not-for-profit organization, the Municipal Act does not suggest any otherwise. You can't differentiate between the two. So, you cannot give one entity a bonus and not give the same entity doing the same thing, nothing. So, in regards to the many builds that they've done over the last eight years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've waived 100,000 of dollars of fees. And we don't take issue with two or three units a year. Now, they're asking for up to 18. And I'll state exactly from here, the Municipal Act states that no entity can get favor over any other entity. When they come to council to ask for relief, and for development charges, fees, or any other related city monies, me as a private investor, I can't come to you and ask you for a waiving of fees, but they can. Any inducements they do make the property value less. They've been able to conduct private business transactions with public money by asking for and accepting waived fees and grants from the city of Niagara Falls and other municipalities in Niagara. So, the relationship with the city is either communal, or they are again trying to gain favor by granting this bylaw furthering their cause. And they continue to have a symbiotic relationship with the city. There is no private developer that has that same opportunity. I am all for waiving all development fees. And I plan to in the new year come to you with that proposal. But, can't waive fees for one person and not waive them for everybody else. We are asking at the, this application at this time is very premature, that Habitat for Humanity get their stuff together and then meet with the residents to work on a plan. Secondly, the proponent gather up all the seven or eight properties that they plan to acquire and come to the neighborhood with a plan. We're asking to reconsider the bylaw, repeal the bylaw based on our concerns that were never, never presented to you.
Thank you. First, do we have any questions of council from Mr. DeLuca before I ask Mr. Hurlovich to comment? Okay? So, I'd ask Mr. Hurlovich, I know there's a lot of information there, if you wanted to respond.
Excuse me, we don't currently in the planning department have an application for anything from Habitat for Humanity. But certainly if they approach our office, I would be happy to recommend that they put their plans together and meet with the neighbors before proceeding with a further application. It's the last thing I heard from Mr. DeLuca in his ask, so I have no problem with that. There isn't a requirement under the Planning Act to give notice that council is about to pass a deeming bylaw. So, city staff proceeded in accordance with the Planning Act. Mr. DeLuca did refer to fair hearing. That is where there is a requirement for public meeting, there isn't one. So, you know, if and when Habitat wishes to proceed, you know, we would certainly encourage them. It's part of our procedure to have a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors before we even process. We require a preconsultation hearing with all the agencies, and then we schedule a date for a public meeting under the Planning Act if there's a rezoning or condominium plan that's coming forward. So, we'd certainly be giving notice in all of those instances.
Does that, so there is no application?
I understand that, but I think you're going one step further to us. Is that we wanted to appeal the deeming bylaw, and you didn't allow, well, not you personally, but the city did not allow us to appeal it. And that's what we're asking for. We're asking that we wanted the opportunity to appeal. There is a 20-day period for appeal. They registered it seven days afterward, after the passing of the bylaw. So, they didn't even give us an opportunity to appeal. All we're asking for is the opportunity to appeal. And at that meeting, and subsequently to that, we asked for an appeal. And nobody would grant us that honor. And that's all we're asking for.
Well, first I'd just like to ask, Mr. Hurlovich, could you just address the, what Mr. DeLuca said about the deeming bylaw?
Yeah, so the bylaw is the bylaw to say that the lot is no longer a lot in a plan of subdivision. That was done to fulfill the requirement of LPAT in order to give the frontage. So, it was recognized by the committee, and Mr. DeLuca pointed this out, that the council can't grant a severance according to this official plan if the lot doesn't have frontage. So, the frontage would only come if the lot was deemed not to be a lot. So, LPAT said there's nothing the matter with combining the two properties, but you do have to deem that lot not to be a lot. So, we're basically following LPAT's order to provide that this property had frontage onto a street. So therefore, it did comply with frontage. There's no requirement to give notice, there's no appeal. The city, in fact, registered the bylaw, it wasn't Habitat for Humanities. It's our municipal bylaw, we registered.
Thank you. Councillor Iannone, did you want to comment?
I'm confused because Mr. Luke's saying one thing, Mr. Hurlovich's saying another. So, when he says that the citizens didn't have a chance to appeal, there is no chance for them to appeal through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Hurlovich?
Yes, Your Worship, through you to the councillor, this is not a zoning bylaw. It's a zoning bylaw that requires public meeting, the notice to area residents, to the agencies, and provided an appeal period. This is not a zoning bylaw.
So, when he said he had no chance to appeal, it's because there is no chance to appeal?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an opportunity to comment? Okay, sorry, and I appreciate, no, I appreciate it, no, thank you. There is no differentiation, but in the Municipal Act, sorry, in the Planning Act, bylaw is a deeming bylaw, signed bylaw, there is nothing. Every bylaw has a 20-day period of appeal. It's in the, it's in the act. You can't change the act. You have a standard practice of not doing it. You have a standard practice of not offering the appeal in deeming. It says specifically in there, and I read it out to you, that there is a 20-day appeal period.
Okay, the CAO's going to comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, that's just not true, that not every bylaw is, has a 20-day appeal period. I would just advise council, you've got a planner here that's been doing this for some 35 years, and in my 38 years, I don't ever remember a deeming bylaw being something that's been subject to any appeal or any process other than this council approving it. So, with all due respect, your facts aren't correct.
This is why we need a legal hearing at every meeting. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's the answer that we're hearing from our planning people. So, right now, there isn't an application, and I guess you can't appeal a deeming bylaw. So, we're not here to debate it, I know you want to.
I know, and I guess I'm not trying to debate it, it's just the fact is that, you know, we asked for specific things, we didn't get them, and we didn't get an opportunity to speak at the deeming bylaw when it was presented. And we had asked to be presented that deeming bylaw opportunity. And then that opportunity is where you voted, and basically, it was a done deal. So, what I'm saying to you now is that we didn't get that opportunity. That's all.
Okay, I've got councillor Crater, and then councillor Iannone.
Thank you, Worship. Just a couple of short comments. I, along with councillor Pregram, we voted against the bylaw. And maybe, I think in fairness to council, you're now hearing a lot of information that I was aware of only because I had gone out and met with uncle and had spent time out there and understood what was happening with this piece of property and what a deeming bylaw was, and that they were putting in a roadway from the back. His backyard is going to have these apartments that they're now creating, and to get out of those backyard, to get out of those apartments, they have to have a road. And they're going to put a road right beside the gentleman's house. Literally right beside his house, there's going to be a road for it to go out. So, all this traffic is going to come out. And to me, it just didn't make sense. But I understood that in order for this to go forward, they have to have this deeming bylaw. So, I'm just sharing that with you, because I think that what should have happened, and I'm not saying it to be critical, what should have happened is that there should have been some kind of a presentation made to the councillors around the table. So, you under, you're now hearing a lot of information that you didn't have at the time. But again, Victor, myself, we had a bit of an understanding of it. I think Victor even spoke on it as well, and he'll speak for himself. And that's the frustration that they all have, is that they didn't get that opportunity to share with you what was happening with this piece of property and how it was going forward, and how you're going to have a road. I'm repeating myself because I can't believe that we're putting a road right beside of a gentleman's home to allow access to this apartment that's going to be built behind him. And that's the proposal. That's what they're proposing this to, that's why they amalgamate. You're right, there is nothing there, but that's the intent. You're not doing this just so you can put a road in, but nothing's going to get built there. You're going to put something forward, that was the whole intent. And that's why they're amalgamating all the land. So, the challenge, and that's, Frank, because they didn't get that opportunity to at least say something, that they'd been notified that the bylaw was coming forward. They would have come out here and at least made a presentation. Maybe the vote would have still gone the same way, but they just feel frustrated because they didn't get that opportunity to at least explain to you. I think most of us didn't even know what a deeming bylaw was. It was the first time, all the years I've been around on council, I've never heard of a deeming bylaw. It was the first time I seen one until I understood what was taking place. So, that's, he's speaking for himself, but that's the frustration, have they missed that opportunity or they felt they should have had it and been here at that night and be able to stand up and speak as to what their concerns were? That's why they're frustrated.
Thank you, councillor.
So, with a deeming bylaw, is it the same where residents within a certain distance would be notified that they could come and speak at that public meeting? Like, did you know it was even coming for a deeming bylaw?
No, and there's no requirement. And I can, the problem was speak for it. There's no requirement to be told about a deeming bylaw. But we did do, at the subsequent committee of adjustment and the LPAT meeting, ask planning staff to be invited to every time Habitat came to council. Because I'll tell you right now, and I'll tell you to everybody right here and to the TV audience, is that every time Habitat for Humanity will be coming to council, we will be coming here talking about the same issues in regards to this. So, whether it be Bellevue, whether it be other of the streets over there, we'll be bringing up the same issues. And that's why we wanted to be here. I have nothing against Habitat for Humanity. I think one or two or three houses a year is a great idea. I think 18 is absolutely horrible.
Where are you getting 18?
I wish I could, you know what? One thing I forgot this morning when I looked, is the picture that they showed at the LPAT meeting, where it's 18 houses.
It's not, so are you talking like townhouses?
18 townhouses in on a less than an acre lot.
Okay, so, but I guess the point I'm getting back to is, when you were at committee of adjustment, I used to be on that committee, do you not sign in and ask for a future? Did you have to sign in, give your name, ask for future notification?
You're asking the perfect questions, because you're right. Yes, but, but for only zoning and... Zoning, only zoning. Not deeming bylaw. That's the one where they slipped in. Let's call it what it is. Well, that's something that we'll have to discuss. That's our responsibility now, because obviously, you know, I'm not, I'm not either expressing my point properly. The fact is that we asked. We did everything, we did our due diligence. We asked to be at the meetings. Well, I'm not sure if I am. Well, because the frustration that we have is that, given this information, I don't know if you, how you would have voted. And it's up to you how you vote. But my point is, you never got that information. You went through the deeming bylaw. We wanted to be there, we weren't there. Now, obviously, right now is, any time that they come with requests and stuff like that, I'll be combing the agenda, and I'll have to do that. But, what we have put in place now is, we've had to walk into the planning department and tell them that we wanted to be there every time Habitat, no matter what the projects were. We do have that in place now. However, it had to be in writing, it had to be almost, basically, I had to physically walk into the department nicely. I mean, not aggressively, but going in there and asking for that, and they did grant to us. Our problem is with the deeming bylaw the way it is right now. Is that now they've got full ride, because they don't care what you guys are going to do, because they'll go to the, they'll go to the, sorry, no, LPAT, and whatever you guys refused, they go through. So, there is no chance anymore. You can, we can appeal. It costs us $300, it's going to cost us another $300 to appeal again, and we are going to appeal again based on the configuration. But, we're going to lose. And that's the problem we have today, is that we should have been here for the deeming bylaw. We were here during the appeal period. I appreciate your expertise, Mr. Todd. I think that maybe that's one of the things that might be something that we don't do very often with deeming bylaws. I think that that's not, but I will, I will consult a municipal lawyer to find out, make sure that that's the way I was told, but that's the way I was told, and I'll have to verify that subsequently.
Thank you for that. Well, first of all, tonight, we're just receiving this report. We're not actually approving or moving. Well, first of all, tonight, we're just receiving this report, we're not actually approving or moving anything forward. I should, Counselor Peter Angel, do you want to comment?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, I just wanted to say, it's pretty easy to share the frustrations of Frank and 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 most of the residents. I myself, I agree, I believe that we should have seen a full application from the very beginning. I think that the intentions were known, which is part of the reason why I voted against the severance at the Committee of Adjustments, I voted against the deeming bylaw when it came to council. I I I think the whole process has made the residents out there very nervous, in terms of they don't know what's coming in behind their homes, by the way. So it's not as it's coming to the side. This is land in behind their homes, and then there's more homes in behind that, which is something that I thought I I thought flag lots were something that we did away with, but I guess not. But I think just the whole piecemeal of it has allowed the process to continue. So the the cutting and the joining of lands, without there being an actual application there to rezon them, I I think was an easier sell than had it all have come down as one. But I guess in terms of what should have happened, in my opinion, we should have had a full application. The residents should have known what the intentions were, and and then we should have taken it all in one rezoning application. That isn't what happened. I voted against the deeming bylaw, so I guess under the Roberts Rules of Orders, I can't make a motion to reconsider anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Iannone.
So I I totally believe that you weren't treated fairly. I I really believe the residents should have had the opportunity to come here, if the CVA knew and LPA knew, the night the deeming bylaw was here, you should have had an opportunity to be here. What I don't like is the tone of every time Habitat for Humanity comes, you're now going to be showing up here, opposed to Habitat, or whatever's happening with Habitat for Humanity, kind of sounds to me like you're targeting them out. And there's reasons Habitat for Humanity exists. That said, had you shown up as residents and spoke to us about this proposed 18-unit townhouse, and I I just spent the summer building on Gray Avenue with Habitat, so I'm a firm believer in them. But if you'd have shown up here with all your your neighbors and said, hey, listen, do you know what you're doing? This is going to go in, you know, we we've asked to be asked to be notified, we're very concerned, these are the reasons why we're concerned. I think you'd have had a different vote around this table. You're giving us information we didn't know, and I'm I'm forever standing here saying it's what we don't know that that leads us to situations like this. But I think you'd have had a different outcome around this table, not a, yeah, yeah. But that said, can we now, he said I want to see you repeal it, but it's past us and it's past LPA. Do I understand that right?
Yeah, I understand, Mr. CAO, did you want to?
In my understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that it's been registered, it was a, maybe Mr. Hurlivich can help, but it was a condition of the LPA sending them here in the first place. So it wasn't staff, this wasn't staff-driven, it was LPA-driven that they needed that.
I understand that, what I'm asking is, I voted for it, so I can make a motion to revisit it. Is it too late to do that? It's been registered, like, we don't have a lawyer here, so I'm I'm kind of wondering, what do we do?
Well, we have a planner, Mr. Hurlivich.
Basically, council creates plans, a subdivision, they're registered, and those are legal entities. Each lot is a legal entity. What we basically did was we passed a bylaw to say, that lot no longer exists as a separate legal entity. So by just withdrawing the bylaw, we can't really just say, oh, well, we're now creating a lot. So I don't know that by rescinding the bylaw, we now necessarily undo the whole action and now create it back to being a lot.
Well, and I wanted that, I wanted you to answer that to Mr. Deluca, because he said I want council to repeal it. I don't know if we can, and if we can, what does that do? Are we in a legal position, are we not in a legal position?
Well, and I think, you know, as as Worship said a little bit earlier, the report tonight is not for council to do any particular action, but to receive the information, I can go back and consult with Aaron Berylus, who are our contracted solicitors, and get that answer for you, because I can't say that withdrawing the deeming bylaw reverses the action.
So then I'll ask for that report to come back at the next council meeting, I make that a motion.
Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Crater, that we asked staff to come back with the report from Aaron Berylus on the legality of rescinding or reconsidering the deeming bylaw.
Because I don't want you to think we're not listening, like, we're very frustrated, I'm just not sure what we can and cannot do.
Well, I think you can repeal any bylaw, regardless of what it is, you can repeal anything.
But we need to.
You have that power, and what I meant was, you have that power.
We understand.
You have to decide that, what the repercussions are.
Well, if, I'm sorry, did we vote on that?
No.
No, okay, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, a question, Counselor?
So then, Mr. Hurlivich, would you get the answers for the questions, if there seems to be some difference of opinion as far as some of the other things, like the appealable deeming bylaw? That kind of thing, whatever he's asking, where there seems to be a difference of opinion, could you also get the opinion from the solicitor when you're investigating?
As to whether he required a public note, or we should have given public notice and a right to.
Whether or not, whether or not that.
It can be repealed, it can be appealed.
Well, that's, is it, okay, sure.
Just that, because Mr. Deluca thinks it is, and staff thinks it isn't. I have another legal opinion on my phone right now, but I'm not prepared to give it, so would you please get that, another one?
Okay, so we've got the motion, and we're going to hear back, and we'll get some answers to the questions, okay? Thanks very much for your time. Did we, we voted, no?
Did we call it?
No.
No, we didn't.
We'll do, all those in favor, okay.
No, he had a question.
We had a half a vote. Okay, 816, application for site plan approval on Marshall, I'm sorry, Mr.?
We still haven't dealt with the actual report yet.
The full report, or just to receive it?
Just to receive it.
Motion, Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Crater, just to receive the report, all those in favor? Okay, thank you for that. Okay, 816, application for site plan approval on Marshall Road. Is Margaret Poroski here?
Rocky Tocken? No.
Yes, Mr. Hurlivich?
I'm sorry, I can pass these around, but this came in 4:40 this evening. It's a letter from a lawyer in Toronto on behalf of Mrs. Porosko, saying, "My clients will not be opposing the site plan approval scheduled for consideration by council this evening, and the form proposed entrusted conditions contained therein will be met."
Okay, all right, great, thanks very much. So did you want to move that, Counselor Carr?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Carr, seconded by Counselor Strange, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. 817, Niagara Falls Canada Day celebration, so we have some options here for possible changes to the Canada Day parade. Do we have any comments or questions, Counselor Iannone?
Yeah, Mr. R, I'm confused as to why we're looking to change it, like, what is, well, the only reason we left the Optimist was because we sold the park. So why are we looking to change it now? Like, I I've seen the alternate locations, there's no stores along those those areas, there's nowhere for people's kids to use a washroom, there's nowhere to buy food, like, it would seem to me we have it in the ultimate spot right now.
Well, why don't I ask Ms. Mildenhour if she wanted to answer that?
Thank you. When we moved our Canada Day event down here to Queen Street, we we never indicated that this would be our forever event home. So we're always looking for new lo, new locations to rejuvenate the event, to attract new users. We did do a short survey last year, and although the majority of the responses indicated keep the event down at Queen Street, there was a lot of interest in relocating the Canada Day event to Fireman's Park. And this year, we have received inquiries from the public and other stakeholders about perhaps moving the event to Fireman's Park. So staff, we did a bit of homework, and there has been a lot of large events and festivals that have taken place at Fireman's Park, and we definitely believe that we can move the Canada Day event there. With respect to food, we can bring in food trucks, we can bring in portable washrooms, we currently bring in food trucks and portable washrooms when we do have the event down here at Queen Street. If we do relocate the event to Fireman's Park, we will no longer have a parade, but we will have extra dollars in space so we can have other entertainment options. But it's purely an option for council to consider if you would like to continue hosting the event here on Queen Street, or if you would like to move the event to Fireman's Park. We did list a third option, which would be a little bit of extra work for staff, but we could consider having the parade continue along Victorian Queen. We would have shuttles, and then we could shuttle people over to Fireman's Park for the event part.
Okay, Counselor Peter Angel, and then Counselor Rocco, sorry.
Yeah, Your Worship, I don't mind waiting, and I I remember when we first left Optimist, there was a number of different options that we were looking at, and staff did say that, you know, let's try it down here, but let's also look at other areas. First of all, I like the hybrid option, which is number three, number three still keeps the parade downtown, and then it moves the actual celebration over to Fireman's Park. I I think the park is a great place to host the actual celebrations, and by doing that, you get to tart, you get to touch two parts of the city. I think you have the best of both worlds, and that would be what I have in favor of, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Rocco.
I I just have one question, was there, well, maybe a couple, was there a reason, is that I'm I'm on the downtown BIA, and I don't recall that ever being opposed to having the parade, are we against any of that?
We would like to keep the parade and the event on Queen Street.
I just think that it, being consistent, we've actually done some research based on having events at Fireman's Park. It kind of gets out of the way, and it disappears from visual aspects of, even if you had Queen Street, or as we are talking about Ribfest, and now how we even have to move our Ribfest event from the Niagara Square. But I think that it's consistent, it's it's great, people love it, they seem to be able to line the streets, and that's what parades are about. It's lining the streets and then having activities and the fun fair, and it's actually in front of City Hall, it's bringing people down to where our business is, and we have it here. I think that trying to break it up and shuttle people after, down to Fireman's Park, is a huge cost, another liability, and I don't know that people want to do that, I think if it, there's something else, they might just filter away and off they go, and that's it, and we're going to lose them. I I think that we've built a momentum, and people look forward to it, and it takes years to get people to become accustomed to what something is is happening in the way of an event, and they build on that momentum. So I think that, you know, it's it's great to see it, we have the parade this this Saturday, the Santa Claus parade, and I think people just tend to get their chairs and want to come and sit, and then they come down and join in the festivities on Queen Street. And it brings people to an area that we want to build and bring recognition, and hopefully continue to build on the developing of Queen Street. So I I would not support having it moved.
Thank you, Counselor Iannone, and then Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I remember, I think the three of us sat on the BI, the downtown BIA, when it moved from Optimist to the down, to the location. And I remember afterwards, that we were a little hesitant, how will it work, everybody loved Optimist, why did we leave Optimist, you know, you guys lost that. After the parade, the first couple of years, it was, this is the best place to have the parade down here. You got a Tim Hortons, you got restaurants, you have bars, you have different, different locations where we have the the entertainment taking place, you can see different entertainment at different ends of the street. Everything worked for everybody, and I'm going to tell you, on some of those days when we're sitting on that that float, or we're walking, or wherever we are, and the sweat is pouring off of us, and you're dragging four children behind you, if you have have kids, you really don't want to move from one location to another location and move and park or get shuttled. You want to do everything where you are, and I think we really helped the stores downtown in doing that, too. And you talk about people forget, you know, you're out of the way at Fireman's Park, we've often said that downtown, people forget that it's there. Well, they remember it's there on Canada Day, which which spread out to Spring Alishous, which spread out to Santa Claus Day Parade. And I think to take it away from the downtown right now would be having us move backwards. I think it's a great place, especially when you're out front here and you're in front of City Hall, and residents are coming up and down the street, and the street is packed, this is where it needs to stay. So I'm not going to support moving it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Campbell.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, but as much as I, and I think everybody else around this table supports the Fireman's Park, we can't take something away from somebody else to put, to help the Fireman's Park. There are other ways that we can help Fireman's Park, and we have over the period of years. I I can't support Fireman's Park at all, this has to remain downtown.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Okay, so then, we're looking for a motion. Counselor Iannone.
I'd like to move that we retain the park downtown on Queen Street.
Okay, moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Rocco, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, all right, that that passes, thanks very much. Just before we get on to communications and comments of the city clerk, I was negligent earlier, and we were talking about elected officials, I forgot to mention our Sergeant-at-Arms. Our Sergeant-at-Arms was just recently elected, Niagara Catholic District School Board trustee, and I'd like to also acknowledge him in this victory. I can't believe that one. That one slipped through, so congratulations, well done. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other communications or comments other than the ones listed just last night? Okay, so 9.1, and I know Counselor Crater, I believe you wanted to speak to this, the Right of Passage Resolution by both the Town of Fort Erie and the St. Catharines and the city councils?
Thank you, Your Worship, just for the information of council, during my term of office at the provincial level, I introduced two twice private members bill called the Right of Passage, and the recommendation is referred to staff, so I'm just going to share some information with you, and maybe you may want to make a decision to support this request by St. Catharines and Fort Erie. There's communities around Ontario, and Fort Erie happened to be where, one of them where there's individuals who own property, a lot of them were from outside of Fort Erie, US US citizens who bought land there, and their backyards ended, and then behind their backyards, there was the lake. So what many of them would do is they'd run fences all the way into the lake, and so that people who normally just walk along the the lake, the Great Lakes along there, would not be able to. And so it was happening right across Ontario, I didn't realize the extent it was happening when I was bringing this forward. So the intent of this bill that we introduced twice, and as you get first reading, it got second reading, but never got the third reading, was to allow the public the right for passage to walk along our Great Lakes. But in the bill that was designed, and I know it's the same bill that's being proposed, it didn't take any rights away from residences who had property, their property was not going to be affected, it didn't allow people to drive vehicles, there were a lot of protection put in place so that where there were opportunities for people to walk along the Great Lakes, they could do that freely, and that that was the purpose, and it was called the Right of Passage. I'm hoping that maybe council, as opposed to referring staff, this one I do know inside out, because I said I introduced it twice and spoke on it in the legislature a number of times, so we had, I will tell you, in both locations, there was a lot of people that came from different communities who were having this problem with fences being put up and blocking them from walking along the Great Lakes. The one example that I re, I think we're all familiar with, was if you're down in Myrtle Beach, can you imagine if every motel or any homes longers put fences all the way into the ocean, and you couldn't walk along along the oceanfront, well, that was kind of the same with the Great Lakes, where it's feasible, you could walk along. So I'm just going to ask council if they'd consider just supporting the request by the city of St. Catharines and the Town of Fort Erie to support their proposal for the Right of Passage bill.
Thank you very much, we've got Counselor Carr.
So what we're suggesting is that people that own the property on the beach, that have fenced their property, they shouldn't be able to do that, and that anyone should be able to walk along their property, or drive their bikes or motorcycles or four-wheelers or whatever, up and down the beach, on private property.
Uh, no.
Not on private property?
No.
So they don't, so the people that have fenced it are fencing off their property?
When I used the word fence, Counselor, what I meant was, to make it clear, is the fence would go, their property line would end right here, but they'd put a fence, and it would go from the end of their parking lot all the way into the lake.
On their property?
No. No.
Off their property?
Ends it. And they'd put fences up all the way into the lake so people couldn't walk along.
But you can't stop people from walking on property that is not owned, you can't stop someone from walking on property you don't own. So people could walk there anytime they want, if you don't own it. The problem is, most people own, a lot of people own right into the water. And so what you're suggesting is, on those particular properties, so if this passes, then are we also suggesting that the municipalities pick up the tab for cleaning up the crap that the people put or throw along the beach as they walk up and down? Are the dogs, are the horses that they bring with them, does that go along with letting them walk on private property?
So maybe the best suggestion is just refer it to staff, and I'll support that.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Crater to refer the resolution to staff, seconded, looking for a seconder, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. 9.2, Community of Cent Agidio, request to proclaim November 30th. GDO, thank you. November 30th, Day for Life Against the Death Penalty. So we can receive and file it, if you like? Okay. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. Will receive and file. 9.3, The Town of Pelham, Notice of Motion Regarding the NPCA. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we receive and file. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. 9.4, Jewish Festival, Request for Waiver of Fees. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Thank you. 9, excuse me, 9.5, Royal Canadian Legion Parade of Veterans, Looking for Convention to Take Place for Their Legion and Waiver of All Fees and Road Closures at the Convention Centre. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.6, Correspondents from the Town of Amaranth, that's licensing process to take water for commercial water bottling facilities.
I would move support.
Here's a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to support, seconded by Counselor Strange. There's no discussion. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.7, Recycling Council of Ontario Requesting October 15th through 21st Waste Reduction Week. Moved by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? It's approved. Thank you. 9.8.
Move the exemption.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Carrion, seconded by Counsel Morocco, that we give exemption to Wyman Limited for some noise to be done, for some work to be done. All those in favor? Thank you. That's approved. Excuse me. 9.9, PH Canada, requesting November be Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month in the city of Niagara Falls. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. 9.10, Latvia 100 Event, Proclaiming to Commemorate November 17th Event. Moved by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Carrion. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Town of Aurora, Requesting a motion that the green belt, a motion on green belt protection.
I would move that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? It's approved. Thank you. 9.12, City of Thorold Correspondents Regarding the NPCA Supervisor Appointment.
Received and filed.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange, that we receive and file. All those in favor? Thank you. 9.14, Niagara Region Correspondents, Universal Support Person Pass Inter-Municipal Transit Service. Looking for...
9.13.
I'm sorry, did I miss one?
9.13.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did. At 9.13, NPCA Policy Has Been Forwarded to Area Municipalities?
Yeah, received information, I think it's just an update.
Okay. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrion, that we receive the information. All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry, now 9.14, Niagara Region.
Move the universal pass, your worship.
Universal pass, thank you. Moved by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Thank you. 9.15, Niagara Regional Metis Council Requesting Louis Rial Day Celebration Flag-Raising, November 9th through 19th.
Yes, I'm with you.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Thank you. That's approved. 9.16, Niagara Region, Regional Incentive Delivery and Eligibility in 2019, for information of council. Looking to receive the information. Moved by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel Carrion. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.17, Niagara Region again, Reserve Water and Wastewater Treatment Capacities, it's for the information of council.
Received and filed.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrion. All those in favor? Thank you. 9.18, Niagara Regional Housing Second Quarter Report. Moved by Counsel Carrion, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.19, Vista Pyrotechnics.
Fireworks.
Yep. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Morocco, that we approve the annual New Year's Eve fireworks from the Skyline Tower. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.20, Niagara Parks Commission To Obtain Their Special Occasions Permit For The New Year's Eve Show. Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.21, The Bridgerton Group, A New Paradigm in Affordable Seniors Living Recommendation That We Refer It to Staff. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Campbell, that we refer it to staff. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.22, Matthew D'Nelli Memorial, they had their event already. Took place November 3rd at St. John's Banquet Center. Because of the election, they didn't have a chance to come to us, and they're requesting the support in the amount of $500 for the fundraiser. Moved by Counsel Strange, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.23, Canadian Association of Retired People Requesting That Council Establish An Age-Friendly Niagara Falls Citizens Advisory Committee, And That The Executive Board, Niagara Chapter 31 Participate On The Said Committee.
Does it have to be a senior on council that sits on there?
No comment. Okay, so moved by Counsel Inoni, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. 9.24, Project Share Requesting Use Of Three-City Buses For Their December 1st Canadian Tire Food Basics Food Challenge. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 9.25 is Girls Night Out, Sponsored By Positive Living. They're asking that their event, Saturday, November 24th. The event is expected to track 50 to 70 guests, and they're asking council to recognize the evening as a public event for their liquor license.
Yeah, I have no problem as long as they're a nonprofit.
Okay, so, so long as they're a nonprofit organization, that we approve the recommendation. That's the motion. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, and we'll find out about that. 9.26, The Niagara District Airport, they are requesting external auditor Crawford Smith and Swallow.
Yes.
Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you.
The bylaws are ready.
Oh my God. Any additional bylaws, Mr. Clerk?
Let's do the ratification in camera.
Okay, first we'll do ratification of the in-camera meeting. I need a motion to, moved by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Carrion, that we ratify the in-camera meeting. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you.
Just reading off what was discussed earlier this evening in camera, there was a report dealing with the Riley Street End. This is a portion of a road allowance in Chippewa that is in between Front Street and the Welland River. The recommendation that was moved is that the city accept an application for permit to construct from the leasee, John Bevan, a part of the Riley Street road allowance for the construction of a dwelling within the permitted area of the leased lands. Secondly, that in the event that the leasee of part of the Riley Street road allowance does not wish to proceed with the application to permit to construct as set out in the recommendation one above, that the city refund the leasee, the rent paid to him, to the city, person to the lease in the amount of $21,827.56. And thirdly, that the city enter into a formal easement with Fortis Ontario Incorporated over the city-owned lands.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Clerk. Looking to give the bylaws a first reading? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved.
So that's bylaws 2018-117 through to 2018-130, read first time.
A second and third reading.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, that the bylaws be given a second and third reading?
Just a question, if I could?
Yes, Counsel Campbell.
With respect to the motion we made regarding the Mr. DeLuca, how's this affect that motion? Because what we're really doing is verifying that motion that was made last week, or last meeting. Are we not?
I'm looking for some direction.
That bylaw, the deeming bylaw is not on tonight's council.
Was it on?
It was on a previous council.
Yeah, but that's what we're doing here with the number 2018-130. 130.
130 is actually just to ratify all the actions of tonight's meeting.
I'm sorry.
A confirmatory bylaw?
It says, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. No problem. We're all good. Okay. So motion by Counsel Peter Angelo to give the bylaws a second and third reading, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Okay, great.
Bylaws 2018-117 through to 2018-130, read a second, third time, and passed.
Is there any new business? Counsel Thompson.
Are you ready? Yeah. I'm sorry that we haven't had a meeting for so long, but I usually try to deal with issues as we go through them, rather than try to bring them to council. But I have four different issues tonight that I have to bring up because I haven't been able to get the proper resolution and solution for people who continually call me and ask where the issue stands. And I think tonight Peter Maolo is here, and I have been dealing with certainly Mr. Holman, and he has really done a lot of work and effort, and he has a lot of solutions. What Mr. Maolo may not realize, there is one step that has to be taken, and I thought it was appropriate to do this officially at a council meeting, where we have a motion saying that we refer to Mr. Holman and the legal staff, Eric Vermiss, to get the person who is responsible for the problem that Mr. Maolo is having with respect to his lot. He has a little, used to be a garage there. It's been torn down because of all the water and the problem. He has a driveway to get to that, and then it's all filled with water. I've been there myself, raining on Sunday night to experience this. It is a problem, and how, over the years, that this corner of property could, well, they owned all the property, I guess, and Mr. Maolo ends up with one little spot with his garage, and it's all filled with water every time it rains, and ice in the wintertime. Anyway, what I'd like to do is, and the person that owns the house will not cooperate, Mr. Holman has all the solutions worked out, and just has to have her permission, who owns the house, and that hasn't happened. There's got to be some kind of a legal way that we can move this forward to try to help solve the problem, and work with the solicitor and Mr. Holman. Maybe Mr. Holman could make a comment about that. I know that Mr. Maolo would like to have this situation solved. It can be solved. He has all the solutions worked out, but the legal aspect of it, with the person agreeing to it, has been extremely difficult. Mr. Holman, can you respond?
Mr. Holman, if you want to briefly sum it up for us?
Yeah, so we've completed the engineering designs. We just need to get the approval to register an easement on the property, and some direction from council to negotiate with the property owner would be, would help us get to the finish line. I know that Morals have been very patient with us, but they're looking for a final solution, because they've been waiting a number of years.
Do we have any questions? Any other councils have any questions? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, your worship, I guess just through you to Mr. Holman, when you say negotiate, what is it that you're negotiating?
Well, the challenge is access to the property and the right to register an easement on somebody else's land. There are some things that, for example, parking, which could be negotiated to allow that property owner to utilize some of the city's property on the weekends to accommodate their, their business operation. But, you know, without some direction from council to proceed in that way, I didn't want to take it beyond my authority.
Your worship, if it isn't a financial negotiation, I'll second the motion.
At this point, we have to report back to council and get the approval anyway. That's the only thing I have.
Did you want to make the motion then, Counsel?
Yeah, sure.
So moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo.
Could that solve your problem for now?
No, there's another thing. I spoke to Mr. Holman about the trees behind the property, that the limbs are...
Tree cutting? Yeah. You have, he has a solution for that.
So they're on the list. We're going to do them ourselves on the weekend. I don't know which Saturday we've got it scheduled for. It'll be a vote, and then we'll be putting a fence along that back property line. But we'd like to get the drainage work all completed, and then do it in a normal, logical sequence. So we may have to wait until the spring before we do the final restoration, but it's a work in progress, and we're committed to...
Can we get at least the trees done? Because, you know, the...
We're just going to do the trees first.
The limbs are coming down.
Yep, he's going to do it. He said he's going to do it.
But when, though? That's my point.
Will it be before the winter or after the winter? Any idea? You know, or you're not sure?
Well, in speaking with the forestry supervisor, he was going to try and get to it within the next couple of weeks, but...
Next couple of weeks.
We'll have to do it on a weekend, when there's no cars in the parking lot, and get in there and clean it up. So I can't tell you a specific date, but I give you my word for what that's worth.
Who's going to put the pressure on it?
No, two weeks is fine. It's just that, you know, springs, spring. It's already been four springs.
Yep. No, we're good now. Now it's been here.
This is why I'm asking.
Okay, did I call the vote?
Yes, not yet.
No? Did I call the vote?
Not yet, no.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved. So you're all set. Thank you, Mr. Maolo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The other, the next one is 6850 Imperial Court, Sue Hillston. She put a new driveway in, special driveway. The front-end loader in the summer, or in the wintertime, last year came by and ripped all of the concrete out that she had put in when there was snow plowing. She put in a claim, they denied the claim because they said it was still on city property. It was one of these areas where the curbs are rounded, and the plow obviously didn't hit the curb, and it was only $1,300 damage. But she put the claim in, it was denied, and she would like to have this, it was on her driveway that she just did, and wants to have it reassessed through the system, through city, and see if they can reconsider it.
So you want to make a motion to bring that, to have staff have a second look?
Have a report back on it, yes.
Okay. So, and the address of that?
6850 Imperial Court.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Just a question, your worship, because I think we've had a few of these over the past couple of months, like I know. We had an email about a lady who's got a flat tire in a construction zone. We had another one from a gentleman who had damage to his car, and he was denied. My understanding is any reassessment would have to go through risk management, and then it would have to go to the city's insurer, and then the insurer would have to then decide once again whether or not there's new information that can overturn it.
And report back to council.
If that's the motion, I'm fine with that.
We, and it's just where these curbs are not there.
Okay.
And they think that that's, we go around and put all the sod back every year on city property after the plow does the damage, but when it's something of a driveway that's just been redone, we just want to report back and have a reconsideration.
Yep, okay.
And I'm, and I'm fine if it's something that goes to the city adjuster, and then the city's insurance adjuster makes another decision. I just don't want it to go to city staff, and then city staff are going to feel awkward in the sense that, you know, they then have to make a decision. It could be agreeing or disagreeing with the adjuster. So, as long as it's going back to the adjuster, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So we have motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that 6850 get reconsidered with the adjuster. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you.
Okay. The other one, he's trying to steal my thunder, is the guy who had the damage on his car with the pothole, Paul Lemire, $400, tire and hitting a pothole. And the adjuster took it, and they reported back and say, no, you're not covered because as long as the city fills in the pothole within 14 days after, then it's, they don't have any liability. Is that a true statement?
I believe it doesn't depend, who would know that? Mr. Dren's not here. Is it based on what kind of a street, if it's a major street or residential street? I thought it, there was different guidelines based on the traffic volume for that street. It's not the same.
You got a pothole, guy has damage, and...
So why don't we just, so make the motion, and we'll look into it. We'll do the same as last.
Paul Lemire.
Make the motion.
Pardon me? Yeah, yeah. And a report back.
Yep, so motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we refer the claim back to the adjuster for a second look. All those in favor?
Yep.
Thank you.
The next one is my favorite.
Is there many more on that list?
No, just one more. This is people that I know. You know them. Aaron Mowbray, father has the...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Car wash out on Stanley in La Faza. Anyway, his son was at university, and he wanted him to get into a business mode. They bought a single-family home. Aaron, the son, responsible. The father bought it, set it up for his son, rented it out to a woman, single, and two or three children. And after four years, four years, the woman was responsible for all of the utilities. They sent a bill to Aaron, the young boy, for $19,000 for a water bill. And he came to me and said, what is this $19,000 for a water bill? I worked for the health department for 28 years, and I used to get constant calls in the wintertime from single mothers who were saying, I have three children in the house, I don't have a lot of money, but the city, I haven't paid my water bill for three months, and they're coming tomorrow to cut my water off. And here we have somebody who is getting a bill for $19,000 for water.
Yeah.
For four years.
Make a motion.
Yeah, no, I haven't finished yet.
I'll make a motion. I'll refer to staff.
Yeah. Then I got involved, and they checked it out with Eric Vermiss, and they said, well, you can only go back, you can only go back two years. So they said, oh, that's okay. We fixed it up for you, Thompson. The bill's now $11,000. I, I think that, we used to have somebody up here every month about the water situation and the billing and the whole management of it, and they, he said, Velowski, you should have somebody who is totally responsible for the overseeing of the water situation. And so if there's a mismanagement here, if it goes for four years without anybody knowing, and having a bill that's being sent out to somebody for $19,000 and $11,000, I'd like to make a motion to refer that to staff to see...
I already made it. Okay. It was 15.
You don't really count as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. So, motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we refer that water bill back to staff for some investigation, for report. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. Counselor Crater, then Counselor Morocco. Oh, no, oh, you're in favor. Counselor, who, Counsel Morocco? Yeah, okay.
I just have to ask council for a request to be included on some information coming forward, maybe just as a, as a citizen. For the number of years that we, and Counselor Peter Angelo as well, have been working hard to try and get the Chippewa wastewater treatment facility moved and forward in Chippewa, I would actually like to be included on information moving forward because it's been something that I've been very passionate about, so, if that's...
Okay. Yep, keep you involved on that, absolutely. Major regional project. Moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. That will keep Counselor Morocco involved in the project. Who else do we have? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Your worship, before this meeting, I sent all the council a picture, and it's a picture of subdivision marker that homeowner thinking that it's his own responsibility because that's the, that's the answer that he had gotten from City Hall, has gone out and nailed siding on the subdivision marker. And, you know, I think it just, it, it makes people unhappy that live in the subdivision, and it, it is a false impression as well. You know, when you drive into a subdivision and you see these beautiful subdivision markers, and I don't really believe that most homeowners that live on corners where these subdivision markers are, understand that when they purchase their property, they're also purchasing that subdivision marker, and that there's, that they're responsible for the maintenance of that subdivision marker. And I guess that's the question, is when it comes to the maintenance, what are we comfortable with? We have, I, I don't really believe that we have any standards, which is the reason why the gentleman went and nailed siding onto the subdivision marker. I'm happy to send it to staff, but I really think that as staff, we need to come up with a policy as to how we're going to deal with these subdivision markers in the future. Either we're gonna take responsibility of them, or we're going to ask developers if they put them in to have some money in some type of trust fund, so that in the future, when maintenance is required on these subdivision markers, that the city can undertake it, and it's not at our cost. I don't think it's fair to simply pass that maintenance back on to the homeowners and then expect that everyone is gonna have the same standard as the standard that it was built on. And I think that's the expectation of the people that live in the subdivision, but it's not really the responsibility of the person who lives on the corner. So, I would make a motion, your worship, that, that staff come back with some type of report that addresses it. I'm happy to send this picture to whoever you like on staff. Whoever's gonna be writing the report, I think, should, should see the picture because we really can't have it, your worship. So, I'd be happy to make that motion.
I, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrillo, and I totally agree. I remember bringing this up probably 10 years ago, and I said, what do we do? Because we got these walls, brick walls, falling down.
Yeah.
And if I'm living there, why am I gonna spend five or 10 grand to fix the wall?
Yeah.
It's for the subdivisions.
Right.
And, and they're built on the private property intentionally, so the city doesn't have liability, but I don't think that's a good long-term solution because people sell houses on average every five years.
That's right.
So, I agree. I love the idea of there being a reserve fund where we've got money, so the sub, the developer who makes all the money developing subdivision, puts some money aside, and we can fix it every 20 years, you know, 30 years, or whatever it is. So, love the idea. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrillo. All those in favor? That's approved.
I'd like the policy to address future subdivision markers and ones that have already been built.
Right.
Because there really is a distinction. So, I, I know we're gonna come up with a policy on a go-forward basis.
Yeah.
But the other issue is what do we do with the ones that are already there?
Yeah.
So, and the second item that I have, your worship, kind of touches on what Counselor Morocco was talking about with the South End Sewers Treatment Plan. I don't know that we've ever done it in the past, but I really think it would be prudent of City Hall to invite our new regional reps to City Hall for a meeting. I, I understand that there's orientation that might take place at the regional level, but I also believe that we need to have a really strong connection with our regional reps, and I know Counselor Valpatti has been amazing in showing up at every single city council meeting. But I also believe, and this goes to the South End Sewers Treatment Plan, that there's projects that have already been approved at the region, that if we don't really inform our new reps, I'm not sure how they're going to understand that those projects are there and that they should be watching out for those coming. So, I would make a motion, your worship, that we invite our new regional reps, and even Mr. Gale, to come in, and we kind of have a little sit-down with city staff. If you want it to be with council, I'm fine with that as well, and maybe we, we can all get updated on some projects that are at the region in the queue that could benefit us.
Yeah, great idea. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Morocco, that we invite our regional counselors to come down and get on side with the agenda and the direction of this city council, and get kind of acquainted with us and comfortable, hopefully come into our meetings. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Any other new business? Counselor Carrillo.
Just want to add to what you said earlier when you had Counselor Morocco and Crater up. It's been a pleasure serving with those two people for the last four years. I'm gonna miss them. I'm looking forward to serving with the new people, but love the old people, and I'm gonna miss them dearly.
Okay, hear, hear. Motion for adjournment. Motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Morocco, seconded by Counselor Crater. All those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.